Welcome to the August 11, 2025, Toowalton City Council Work Session. First item on our agenda tonight is a Safe Parking Programs overview for Washington County, led by Megan Cohen. Welcome, Megan. Come on up.
Nope, turned it off. There you go.
There we go. Okay. Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Late afternoon, summer evening. I'm Megan Cohen. I am the City-County Homelessness Liaison for Tiger, Toowalton, and Sherwood. And I'm here this evening just to provide an overall overview to you all about Safe Parking Programs in Washington County and what they bring to the communities that they're in. So with that, we'll get started. Next slide. Oh, thanks. Okay. I'll do it. All right. So I know that I was with you all and with our outreach team a few months ago to provide kind of an overview of the homeless services that we have and what homelessness in Toowalton looks like. I just wanted to provide some additional information this evening because as we see different funding cuts due to different policy decisions and available funding across the board, we are seeing the situation become much more dire on a day-to-day basis. So I'll just start by saying that we are seeing a lot of families that are facing rent increases and eviction without resources. The state did not, they actually reduced the amount of eviction prevention dollars that are being provided, and community action has put their eviction prevention program on indefinite hold after not having enough resources to be able to continue providing that. We are also hearing that through the executive order, there are more eviction prevention cuts to happen at the federal level, over a 50% cut in addition to other programs like CDBG and HOM that are on the list as well. Most of those eviction prevention dollars were going to families to keep them housed. We're also in a situation where a lot of like our rapid rehousing programs, DV programs, they run on sort of a two-year basis, and so those funds have also expired for families. I have interfaced with several Toowalton families just in the last two, three weeks. We have a family who is mom, two kids. They have been stably housed for the last two years. They had some rapid rehousing dollars that had helped and were running a daycare business out of their home. Those dollars went away, and due to other situations, like needing to go to DV courts, they weren't able to continue bringing in the same income and were facing eviction from their landlord and were in the process of trying to negotiate that. We also just recently had a situation where police were called to a Motel 6 in Toowalton. There was an older woman, older than 65, with disabilities, who was unable to pay for her overnight stay, so she was being asked to leave. We worked with Toowalton Police to get her an E-bed, an emergency bed, at the Tigerd Shelter, and Toowalton Police transported her there, which is great. While police was there, they had a family approach them and say that they were also being asked to leave the hotel. Mom, dad, two young kids under the age of six, and they had no other resources. We connected them with an outreach worker. Family shelters are 100% full. Adult shelters are 100% full. There are month-long waiting lists on both of these. And so Just Compassion used some additional funding they had to put the family up as they worked with them on what next steps might look like. So we're lucky. We have really great service providers that are trying to help us find options, but we're really seeing this huge gap between people being asked to leave and when they're able to get into the services. And finding that bridge is something that I think we'll talk a little bit more with Safe Parking. But I would say about twice a week, I'm hearing from families, and I know that obviously our service providers and other community liaisons, like the schools, are going to be hearing from them a lot more than that. As I mentioned, we have few local resources to offset the costs or help with resource navigation. Specifically here in Toowalton, there just aren't those connection points for people, other than having our outreach workers come down, which they're happy to do. But we don't have sort of centralized navigation and sort of a place for people to start, other than going to the library, getting some info about resources there. So that also is where we can find some difficulties in getting people connected to those services, which again, we're very lucky to be in a place where we have local dollars providing supportive housing services, and those services are now completely full. And as we are all experiencing right now, it's very hot outside, not hot enough to hit the thresholds for severe weather, and so we're seeing a lot of people experience heat illness, heat sickness, because there really aren't those shelters, those shelter beds for them to stay in in the meantime. We continue to see cuts to SSI, SSDI, a lot of folks really struggling with low-wage jobs. We're even hearing that people who are in affordable housing are having a hard time maintaining that. If you're making minimum wage at $15 an hour, you're generally maybe bringing in $2,000 in affordable rents at like 60, 80% AMI, you're paying over 50% of your rent on that affordable housing. So that is continuing to make things difficult. And our point-in-time count, of course, revealed that for about every 10 families that are getting housed, we're seeing 15 more become homeless. So I would say that I am seeing and hearing about it directly here in Toowalton with Toowalton residents, and wherever we can be creative, now is the time. So just to level-set us on homeless response strategies, there's a couple different ways to respond to homelessness in our communities. Some of them are reducing the inflow, so those prevention pieces, which include affordable housing and eviction prevention. Again, we're losing a lot of that preventative dollars to prevent the inflow, which is what we're seeing right now. We then have things like addiction treatment and support, the CAT, the county's Addiction Treatment and Triage Center will be, they have their Hillsborough Building online now, and the Beaverton Building comes on, I believe, in November, December. Those will be some of the first detox beds that we have in all of Washington County, and inpatient beds, which is great and probably going to fill up very quickly. And then we have programs specifically focused on connecting people with housing, which include our housing programs and our shelter programs. And Safe Parking is going to fall into that last category. I think one thing that's important to know about Safe Parking is it's an extremely high-barrier program. So things like shelters, housing programs, they are taking people sort of, regardless of where they're at, doing it without background checks. Safe Parking requires background checks, requires people to engage in a case management plan, and to agree to a host of expectation and rules that come with the program as well. So what is Safe Parking? Safe Parking is, the model that we sort of have in Washington County is three dedicated parking spaces for households living at a designated location, site location. So that might be a municipal site, might be a church site. Those spots are reserved 24/7 for folks. All the guests are background-checked for histories of sexual or person-on-person crimes. The program does serve families with children and adults, so we need everybody to be safe in that program. Guests must work with a case manager on a plan towards stable housing, so it's not just a place to park and stay. The goal is for people to get into housing from this program. And they must agree to follow the code of conduct for the site, which includes no drug or alcohol use. Obviously, they're driving a car. We would want to expect that. It includes being responsible for pets and children, following quiet hours. It's a pretty extensive list of expectations on how they behave on the site. Keeping things really clean, so not having stuff outside your vehicle, that's included. And then it also includes two additional spaces. One is for a restroom, a porta-potty and handwashing station, and one is for a pod storage. And the pod storage is really just designed to give people the ability to get some stuff out of their car so that they have more room to sleep in the vehicle. And then program cost has been roughly around $100,000 for five sites. About half of that, $50,000 to $60,000, is for case management of 15 to 20 households. And then it's about $10,000 per site for the infrastructure, for the porta-potty and the handwashing station. So just to give you all an idea on what that looks like. The way the model has worked is that the cities have acted as the funders of the program. So Beaverton and Tigerd right now both have existing Safe Parking programs. They are general funding these, and then they contract with a service provider to provide the complete operations for the program. So they do the background checks, the intake process, manage the waitlist. They do all the case management. They do all of the exiting, if, you know, people need to leave the program, those types of things. Currently, Just Compassion operates both the Beaverton and Tigerd program. And then they work with host sites, again, churches, municipal locations, that are just offering the locations. So it's at no cost to the host site, other than them providing those parking spaces on their site. This gives you an idea of what Safe Parking looks like, and mostly looks like if you were to drive past or through a church, like everyday parking there. The programs, for the most part, are not serving RVs. It's sort of a case-by-case basis on, you know, whether folks in those RVs want to get into housing, but they're largely serving, you know, standard vehicles that folks are living out of. And then the pod and porta-potty are there, too. So it might look like you have some construction or something like that happening where you would need a porta-potty for it, but they go generally pretty under the radar. The expectation is like no tents outside of the vehicles, no trash. Everything is very like neat and kept, specifically to really protect those sites and to keep everybody accountable for the program. Like I mentioned, folks who come into the program agree to all sorts of neighbor agreements. Those are also generally up for conversation when we do public engagement around a site, which includes, you know, where are those spots located on the site? What time should quiet hours be? I will say, most of our sites right now do include preschool programs, and so some of the sites have, you know, rules about just like, there's an expectation you won't be in this area of the property during a certain time. But largely, I would say, over the years, the biggest challenge that we have with people that need to leave the program is just not following through on their case management plan. So we've had very few, in Tigerd, we have actually had zero negative exits. So we have not had to ask anybody to leave the program due to not following the agreements. That program's been running since September. Beaverton's been running a little bit longer. And so, but generally, the number-one reason people are asked to leave is actually on the case management piece. So the two programs I mentioned, Safe Parking and Beaverton, they have five host sites right now, four churches, one municipal lot. They have, in the last year, 65 individuals were served with 85% transitioning into housing from the program, which is outstanding for a homeless service program. We don't see numbers like that with other like shelter programs, very positive exits into housing. The majority of folks who are not transitioning into housing are actually just continuing into the program because they're on waitlists or waiting for something to get approved. They have had a really great partnership with Beaverton Police, so has Tigerd, where police will actually do referrals in. So when they're out, you know, citing people for parking ordinances, talk about the program, see if it's something that people are interested in, and help make that connection to get people in. And they've actually found that it's reduced calls to police on their host sites. A lot of the churches were dealing with like different types of like loud noises, other folks coming and doing things they don't want to happen late at night. And with having the program there, there's like that, those extra set of eyes. And a lot of times, Safe Parking participants are actually calling police to report suspicious activity or other things. And it's actually improved what those sites have looked like on a night-to-night basis. Very similar for Tigerd. We've had, this is actually even higher now, but 12 households served by the program with four that have transitioned into housing. We're finding it's taking a really long time to get people into housing, so the turnover is slow. I would say like minimum four months, but probably closer to six most of the times. The exception being families who are trying to get into family shelter right away, and even then, several weeks is standard right now. And really, what it is doing right now is providing a bridge for services that folks are waiting for. So as they're waiting for family shelter, getting them into Safe Parking so that they have access to other services, they have access to restroom, we know where they are, we're able to check in with them, doing that for other folks who are maybe on the waitlist for like other permanent housing programs as well, too. There's a couple other examples. Lots of folks have adopted similar programs. Closest to you all, Wilsonville has been allowing parking and camping in their City Hall site as part of their Time, Place, Manner ordinance. So from 7:00 to 7:00, they just allow people to park and camp there. And they have, I think they said that they're on average having like three to four people camp and then like 15, 10 to 15 vehicles on any given night. They have somebody come and check in in the morning, ask people to move along, but it has not been structured like Safe Parking to provide that sort of direct connection to services. And then Redmond has been offering a very similar program to Beaverton and Tigerd for the last couple of years. And with that, I will just stop there and just see what questions there are about Safe Parking.
Questions for Megan. Councilbrooks and Council President Pratt.
Thank you for your presentation. One, I guess my first question is, there are case managers, and so how much does a program like that cost?
Yeah, so the case management, I should say, one thing I'm imagining, if there is interest from Toowalton in doing something similar to this, is having a shared program within southeast Washington County so that we can share case management costs. The case management for up to like 20 households is usually around $60,000 right now. So Tigerd is currently providing around, I want to say, $90,000 towards the program, because they have case management, and then three, we're working on a third host site right now.
And my second question is, how much would it cost for eviction prevention programming?
Yeah, that's a good question. So when I talked to Family Promise of Toowalton Valley recently, they have some eviction prevention dollars. They are telling me that the average eviction prevention, like, like amounts that they are having to give per family right now is $4,000. So $4,000 in back pay per family in order to, in order for them to be able to keep their housing, and even then, a lot of folks are not able to. It's just to make sure that there's not an eviction as they go back out to search for affordable housing. So $4,000 on average per family.
Right. And so eviction prevention, and then you have families that are out, you say for an average of how long before they get housed?
For families, I don't have a great sense on average, because usually we're able to get them into shelter within like the first couple of weeks. But I would say probably, in general, I'm seeing that's taking like four to six months to get folks back into housing.
So they're out for four to six months?
Yeah.
So I guess my first thing is that I think that eviction prevention is one of the most efficient things that we do, and to see the numbers turn from 15 housed, 10 housed, and 15 out is astounding, and it's really unfortunate that that funding passed that way, because it doesn't make sense to me at all. Why would we want more people on the street, more risk of disease, illness, kids being homeless, traumatized for their whole lives after this, all this kind of stuff? And usually, a lot of times from illness. And so the prioritization and what we're ending up with here is really, in the wealthiest country in the world, is really abominable to me personally. I just can't even understand it, how that could be not a priority. I guess that I would like to know more information about specifics, interventions, and ways that those services could be dovetailed. And I'm also curious if there's any advocacy going on around returning eviction prevention. I mean, they can do emergency sessions for transportation issues. Can we do some for health and well-being of our children? Anyway, let's just, thank you. Thank you for your work. It's hard.
Oh, gosh, I agree. This is just heartbreaking that people just can't have a place to live. My question's more because I'm not a social worker, is like, when the services that are being provided, could you like give a little more detail about what kind of services they get and what kind of help they get?
Yeah. And so in Safe Parking, I'll say there's a mix. It really just depends, person to person, what's needed. Some of it is helping folks connect if they haven't had SSI or SSDI, and they might qualify Social Security or Social Security disability, trying to help them through that process, so that they can have that additional funding and income. Although a lot of that is still not enough. That's where we're seeing the gaps. Some of it is just helping people work through like different employment options, try and find something that will provide more income. Definitely getting enrolled in all the county services, so doing Phase 1 assessments, getting them enrolled in any housing voucher programs they qualify for, any shelter programs that they qualify for. Doing an actual search for affordable housing options, either like market or affordable, affordable, regulated affordable housing. So there's quite a range of what that might look like. For families working directly with the school district, within the Kenny Vento program is really high on the list. So like buses can actually come and pick kids up near our sites or at our sites, just try to figure out how to not stigmatize that for kids. And just trying to work through if there's other partners like DHS involved or anything like that, connecting with them as well.
Oh, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions for Megan. Council Hillier.
Thank you. So I'm curious about, has there already been any conversation with Just Compassion about who could potentially operate something like this in Toowalton? Or have churches come forward? Or I guess also, I'm wondering, with the incredible wraparound services at Plantback Gardens, is that a place that, should this be an option in our community, that we already have resources and could plug into those?
I like the Plantback Gardens thought. So yes, I will say, there, Just Compassion has a lot of interest in expanding the program. If they're able to, they have the capacity to do it. They have a very long waitlist of folks that are coming in from southeast Washington County that would like to be in Safe Parking. We have had some conversations with churches in Toowalton. I'm also having conversations in Sherwood as well. And we do have churches that have expressed interest in exploring the option if it's on the table.
Great, thank you. And could you also share a little bit more about who, who is the enforcement, if you will, if the rules are broken in an area, and how does that look?
Yeah, that's a great question. So typically, Just Compassion is the enforcers. So, you know, if there were to be any sort of concerns, the first step is really contacting the case manager, super responsive. We have a site at Tigerd City Hall, and so there will be times where I contact him just to be like, hey, I think somebody could use a check-in, or, you know, it's really hot. to be like, hey, I think somebody could use a check-in or, you know, it's really hot, like can you come by with some water, those types of things? Or, you know, somebody's playing their music too loud, can you come have a conversation? So they'll do those things. They are responsible for like doing the exits if there are people like not following the rules. They will work with police. So if there's like a tow or something, they will, you know, have the, they will cover the cost of the tow if that needs to happen. They will, you know, communicate with police if it's like, hey, you know, we're going to exit somebody. They share everything about like local city ordinances, like you're not going to be able to park here, here, you're going to have to find another spot. So there's some collaboration with police. But really, I think they have managed all of the sort of enforcement of the rules of the program.
Thank you. And my final question is, you mentioned that there was kind of community outreach about site choosing. Could you speak to that a little bit, please?
Yeah, so typically I will, because they're locally funded by jurisdictions, I should say, one of the things about this program being outside of supportive housing services is that Just Compassion directly manages it. And one of the expectations with the local programs is that they are placing people in the program from our communities. And so taking those, taking those referrals directly from police, from service providers that are interfacing with people in Tigard, Beaverton, whatever that might look like. And so there have, it's really about ensuring that we as a community are being, I think, responsible and are keeping our operator accountable for everything that we have in the program. So the way that it has been structured in Beaverton and Tigard is before we bring on a site, we will have some kind of community forum with local neighbors of the site so that we can present what the program is, answer questions, take feedback as it relates to the good neighbor agreements for each site, and then implement that. Also gives them, like who do you call in those different situations and those types of things? I feel like, as you can imagine, people come to those meetings concerned and I'd rather have people come, be able to get answers to their questions before that program starts rather than come afterwards. So it's not something that's required from a planning perspective, but something that I think is a really helpful component of having folks understand what the purpose of the program is and how it keeps us all safe.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Council Sacco.
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation and all the work that you do. I learned about this program and IDEA Committee, so thank you as well for your work there. So who is being serviced, and I apologize if I miss this, but for example, like in Tigard, are where the 12 households that have been serviced, are they Tigard residents?
Yeah, it's, it is something we are reporting on monthly. So I want to say the majority have been Tigard. There might have been like one or two Beaverton folks, I have to go back to the, I feel like I just filled out a report today and it didn't stick, so I apologize. But if they're on the prioritization list, Just Compassion always prioritizes Tigard residents for the Tigard program.
All right, thank you. And then how many people in the program could have, and I know this is maybe a hard question to answer, but could have used the eviction prevention? Because just, you know, quick math, it seems like it's about the same cost. And as someone else mentioned before, like avoiding all the traumatization, the cost is similar. Like what, I guess where is that, that balance between this program or putting the dollars towards eviction prevention?
Yeah, I mean, I would guess all of them probably could have used it at some point or another. I don't know, I think there's a mix between just affordability, like long-term affordability, like if they had need ongoing like sort of eviction prevention or like a housing voucher type of thing. I would say it's a mix between, like we have a lot of older folks on fixed incomes that are going to need some kind of voucher in order to offset their housing costs long-term. And there are some folks where maybe if they had just had a month or two of eviction prevention, that could have kept them housed a little bit longer.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Megan? All right, thank you for your information.
Thanks, all.
All right, that brings us to item number two on our work session agenda tonight, and adds duckkeeping in residential areas. This will be Kevin and Aduquilla, are you up? Welcome, Kevin, welcome, Aquila.
Hey.
You got back from Canada, they'll let you back.
Yeah.
Not, not her particularly, it's, it's, you know, it's a slam against the administration, sorry.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. We come to you today to just gauge the city council's interest in potentially adding duckkeeping along with chicken keeping as a permitted use in your low-density residential area. As you may recall, last month, this came, this issue came before the city council based on a community members' interactions with one of our code enforcement officers. I want to make clear that this council doesn't have jurisdiction over the potential code enforcement case. I don't believe this gentleman has been cited for any violation of the Tuolton Development Code at this time. But again, the overarching issue is that the code enforcement matter has been held in abeyance so far while we just gauge your interest on potentially allowing this new permitted use within your low-density residential zone. And that would add duckkeeping to chicken keeping in, in that, as a permitted use. So really, we have a staff report kind of laying out the, the history back in 2000, I believe it was 13, the city council added chicken keeping to, as a permitted use in the low-density residential zone. That's just another type of animal that was allowed to be raised within the city of Tuolton in that zone, along with small animals like dogs, cats, guinea pigs, and other things. And so that's kind of where we're at, is really just want to hear from you, what your thoughts are, if there's any interest in moving forward. If there's not, this matter will be, go back to the, to the city to deal with. If there is a violation of the Tuolton Development Code, that will be handled through our code enforcement folks. And a violation citation could be issued to this community member and that community member would have due process rights. They could certainly contest the citation through our Tuolton Municipal Court and that person could have their day in court.
All right, so questions for Kevin and or Aquila? Or comments? Okay, Council Brooks.
I have questions. I, I understand the history of this was came from like exotic animals and then there was opening of the code and then there was this, looking at urban farming with that growth of interest in raising eggs and things like that. Which is kind of interesting to me because one of the reasons that we have mailboxes shaped the way that they are is because Sears used to sell them because that's how they would sell the baby chicks and that would allow them to have a dome to breathe. So it's something that's historically been a tradition for ages in our country. And so I guess some of my things that come up for me in this conversation, especially in relation to, to the last conversation that we just had, is I think that we're at this place again where there's a concern about the basic food, clothing, shelter needs that the community has. And I do know that some people that are allergic to chicken eggs eat duck eggs instead. So I don't know the best practices and what the other communities do around these types of needs, but I am curious about that. And also even like what we do with food, you know, like Victory Gardens and things like that, just where there's access to food and nutrition for people that live in our communities. As there may be people in our communities that want to step up in a bigger way as the dynamic of our community changes. Because we haven't really even seen the federal impact of what's going to happen for the amount of houseless people that we're going to have. I know that's a big conversation and, but I just wanted to put it out there because it's something that comes up for me and it's something that I have curiosity around. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Council Sacco.
Thank you. I, you know, I have not gone into great detail with research, but from what, what I have seen is that there, there are cities around us that do allow for flightless ducks. Also, that, again, just internet research, but that they do tend to be less noisy and also, you know, cleaner in the, in the respect that they carry, you know, less mites, things like that. So they could be, I, I'm, I am struggling to find a reason that they are not allowed other than the fact that it wasn't ducks that came before the council and chickens was the, was the concern the last time. So I'm just having a really hard time understanding why flightless ducks were excluded. Again, other than just that it wasn't the thing that came before us, of taking a hard line that, that they are noisier, that they are, you know, cause some sort of harm. I also do realize that changing the code does take effort and time and resources away from the city. However, I just, I can't find, I guess, a good reason why they are excluded. So I don't know if either of you have any information that could help enlighten me, but I had a hard time finding a reason.
And Council Sacco, I'll certainly let Aquila chime in. She was here when that Plan Text Amendment.
So was I. I can't answer, I'll let Aquila go first.
What, what I, what I do know is there was a ample public engagement when that 2013 Plan Text Amendment and accompanying code provision with the regulations regarding chicken keeping came. And what I can see from the legislative history, I don't know why, there was only one type of domesticated fowl allowed, chickens and not the others. But it's clear from the legislative history that what was, that's what was intended. And Aquila might have more information on how they got there.
Yeah, thanks for the question. So what I remember, I don't remember us talking about ducks, but what I do remember is that there was, there was a lot of opposition to chicken keeping and there was slightly more support for chicken keeping. And so the, I, I think that's what it really came down to, is that there was just enough support for just chickens and how can we make this a clean and neighbor-friendly use? And it actually had started, I kind of forgot about this, but it started like in 2010 and went around and around and we put it on hold because we weren't getting anywhere. And then, for whatever reason, I don't remember, brought it back. And we, I think the reason that we don't allow any other fowl, the quail, pheasants, turkeys, or ducks, and I had never heard of a flightless duck at that point. We didn't talk about the different types of ducks at that point. But I think the reason that we kept it so narrow was because there was such a slight, I'll call it what, majority, there was a slightly more support for chickens than there was opposition. And so that was the way to kind of get, get that ordinance passed. I don't know, Mayor, if you.
Sure.
Remember differently or?
Sure, sure.
So I guess with that information, that brings, that leads me to think, you know, again, just with my internet research, I'm not like a duck expert or a chicken expert. But if, you know, if chickens are, you know, a little bit more noisy, a little bit more prone to mess than ducks, it seems like ducks are on, I guess, and we have, we have reached a, you know, decision on chickens, obviously, years ago, that, you know, there, there would be the same or even more tolerance for an animal that is less noisy, less dirty, if you will.
So the discussion back then, this Quilla was dead on accurate, it took forever to get through this because chickens, there was significant opposition to chickens. People don't want them next to them, next, next door. So we kept going back and forth with, the general idea was folks wanted chickens for food, not for companionship. Was to have eggs available to their family at low or no cost. The issue was, as you're saying, is the noise, the rodents, all that good stuff. And we, we had to go back and forth where on, over and over and over again, were the setbacks, requirements, to get to a point where there was a happy median, if you will, of where it was just enough support for the folks who wanted the chickens and the people who were adamantly against them, saw that we were doing our best to make it so that the chicken coops wouldn't be against their fence, be nowhere near their fence, the smell shouldn't waft over. We didn't discuss any other animals because this was the only animal that was brought up because it was, again, just for food. No one was raising chicken, just had it as a companion. They're all bringing up, and it was only allowed, there are no roosters allowed, it was only chicken, you know, female chickens. So that's the history of it and that's why we didn't include anything else. Because we could barely get this across the finish line because of significant neighborhood opposition to this. The only thing that comes close to this was the opposition to backyard marijuana. That was another one where neighbors lost their minds by having that next door. So, you know, I understand the gentleman who wants to have these ducks in his backyard, but I can see significant opposition in neighborhoods to this. They were not happy about the chicken thing, but when it came down to it, the amount of permitted chickens that are allowed in the city of Tuolton isn't as many as we thought because it's very difficult to reach the setbacks and hit all the requirements. So I'm going to assume that we're going to have to come up for or come up with unless they're the same. All there are different kind of requirement setbacks for wherever ducks are kept in that will make people happy. But that's the history of what happened. Yeah, it was years going over this.
Council Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for your comments. I, I guess my curiosity is, has there been a lot of complaints since we passed this? Kind of reminds me of the conversation that we just had, like sometimes people are more worried about things than it turns out to be.
I'm not aware, I mean, so after we passed it in 2013, we did have a few chicken licenses that we issued, or permit. And I'm not aware of, it doesn't mean that it didn't happen, I just don't really recall if we've had a number of complaints about, and you're asking specifically like, have we had complaints about chickens?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure, I'd have to ask.
Since I've been on council, I haven't seen any complaints about chickens, so just for narrative. So I don't know if the community's perspective has changed. The other thing that was interesting to me about the conversation was that there was, seemed to be a group connected with other policies from other cities. And I'm just curious if there's been any research on that since we heard that testimony since last time we were talking about this. Because there seemed to be like a group of three other things that some of the cities allowed. I don't remember which was cited, but it was the flightless ducks and one other thing.
Yeah, I haven't conducted any research yet.
Okay.
That's, that would be a next step, but none of my staff has done that either.
And then I'm just curious as well is if we looked at it as an oversight instead of adopting something new, could it be something that could just be an amendment versus?
I think that. I think that.
If it fit into the same qualifications.
Well, the, I think the Development Code specifically says chickens. I don't think we actually, like, describe an animal that we could then be flexible enough to say, oh, this fits a different type of bird.
A chicken.
So it would.
An egg-bearing animal, you know, like a.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't say anything like that.
Domestic fowl, yeah.
Yeah.
If we could switch chicken for domestic fowl.
Could we, sure, yeah, I mean, that's, yeah. But would that still be, that's still an amendment. I don't think we could make that a, like a Scrivener's error where we just change the wording, that it still ended up being an amendment, yeah. But yeah, that's.
I'm just wondering if there's an efficient way to do it.
Yeah.
So that we don't have to keep talking about it, and if there are people that want to do it.
Mm-hmm.
Just so it's more accurate.
Just to be clear, though, I think what Aquila's saying is that any change is, we'd have to reopen the code and have an amendment. It, it's not like you can just cross out chicken and say domesticated fowl. It, it goes through a code amendment.
That, that's my understanding as well. Specifically, I, I believe the most efficient way is for the TDC 40.2101A to be amended to allow for other types of flightless fowl, and then the corresponding chapters in the Tuolton Municipal Code 615 would have to be amended as well to incorporate this new type of fowl, that is, would be permitted.
And to, and then, how laborious is it to do that, to open the code and add, change those words?
Um, so it, well, it, it depends. I'm in a silly lawyerly term and say it depends. It, and the, the piece that depends is on how much public involvement the council thinks that we need or would like to see. But at the minimum, it is, it's a Plan Text Amendment, so we have the notice to DLCD, that's a 35-day notice, it's, it's a legislative update, right? So then it goes to Planning Commission, and there's the kind of 20-day notice period for that, and they make a recommendation, and then it would come to council. And then it's, so, and that would be after we, like, get the wording down. So if we'd spend some time working on the wording, I'm going to say, this is going to sound like a lot to you, but it's probably a month so that we can circulate it through all the right parties, make sure that we've got the right wording down, and then we would start that whole legislative process. So, I mean, hmm, we're, like, if everything goes, like, smoothly and there's no other public involvement besides the Planning Commission, it's maybe like three months.
Okay.
I don't know, does that sound reasonable?
That sounds, thank you, appreciate the information.
Counselor Gonzalez and Counselor Reyes.
So I, I would be in support in, in revising the code to, to go in the way of the chickens. You know, I work with many communities, and in, in some communities, ducks are allowed because they have five acres, 10 acres. You know, it's quite expansive, so you don't really notice the ducks. But in urban environment where the average lot is 10,000 square feet, 5,000 square feet, you know, that can make it quite challenging for sanitation purposes, by the way, by the same way as chickens. So I would be in support of revising the code to make it clear that it'll be by way of the same process of chickens. You've got to have your 25-foot surroundings and all, all the various things, that way it's clear. And this might be an opportunity to include other, other animals that we are not thinking about at this moment, that we can go ahead and include at this time.
And so that's where the public involvement would come in, and that's, and that's what would change the timeline. So, like, if you're interested in research for what other cities allow and you want to make it broader than flightless fowl, honestly, that's going to push it out at least, like, six months probably, the minimum. Usually, these legislative changes take, like, a year, honestly, but.
Especially something as controversial as this could get.
Okay, chickens for a long time. Counselor Reyes.
Yeah. I, I guess I'm thinking more like to our, my fellow counselors and mayor. Are we solving a problem here? Are we, that we want to use staff time to do all this? I mean, it's easy for us to sit here and say, yeah, go and do, and amend, and, you know, it's just a change of words, but I mean, are we solving a problem that's going to enhance our community, that's going to advance the, the, the quality of life within our, our community, our Tuolton City and residents for the future? And it looks like it's a lot of work. I'm just thinking, like, is this something that, for one, somebody, one person brings it up, and then in the end, there's more opposition than there are, there is for this change? And then we spent countless of hours and time and resources for something that really, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just, that's my question, are we solving a problem?
Counselor Hillier.
Thank you. I'm, I'm curious. No, no, there was a, sorry. Kevin, would you please speak to the, I, I think you indicated or referenced a due process avenue. Could you expand on that for us, please?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Hillier. So there is a potential for a code enforcement action in this particular community members, for this community member. That person hasn't been cited yet, but let's say that the council doesn't want to act right now and just let the code enforcement matter run its course. If this person was cited for a violation of the Tuolton Development Code, and I believe that would be TDC 40.2101A, then that person would have the opportunity to challenge that citation in the Tuolton Municipal Court. And it would be set for a hearing in front of the judge, and the community member that was cited would have the ability to present their case on why that ducks are allowed in the city of Tuolton, and staff would have their say as to why ducks are prohibited in the city of Tuolton. And the judge could rule that the, you know, the city has the better case and that ducks are prohibited, and then that gentleman would have a decision to make. But if the judge were to say that, you know, I look at the code and I don't agree with staff, I don't believe that the Development Code prohibits ducks in the city of Tuolton, then that creates an issue for the city, is that now ducks are allowed with no regulations in place, and it potentially would require the city to take some future action as to flightless fowl.
And it would be similar, thank you very much, and it would be similar to the action that we're talking about right now.
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Sacco.
This one last, well, actually, I think two last things, but, so I'm just, I'm just sitting here thinking, putting myself back to where, the, the time when we were talking about chickens. I wasn't here, to be clear. However, if, I, I'm trying to, I guess, rationalize if the conversation was chickens and flightless ducks, would have we ended up with a different outcome? And I have a hard time thinking that the answer is yes. And so I, I think someone used the word oversight, and I don't know if it necessarily would be an oversight, but if it was included in the conversation, again, I just, I just don't know if there would be that much additional opposition if, you know, the, the community green-lighted chickens, if they would say absolutely no to flightless ducks. I just, I have a hard time wrapping my head around that, again, considering that they're not as noisy and cleaner. So I just wanted to say that, and I guess I have three points. The second one is I just wanted to underline Counselor Brooks's point about using duck eggs for food, which is something that people use a lot. And so if the, if the intent of the allowing chickens was for food, again, that falls under that same category of what was already discussed previously with the chickens. And then, I guess lastly, I, I'm still not clear on what the, the specific complaint was with this current situation.
Sorry.
And if there was, and, you know, some issue that would be of concern to the general population.
Thank you, Counselor Sacco. I can speak to that last point. The only thing, the knowledge I have about the complaint was that there was a complaint made about an animal, a strange, quote-unquote, strange animal in someone's backyard. I have no further information, there's no evidence in the record that I have before me that there was any kind of noise or odor complaint. Not to say that that's not the case, it's just somebody raised the issue to our code enforcement department, and they take the action they need to take, they investigate.
Thank you.
Counselor Reyes.
My question was answered.
Okay.
My question was answered, thank you.
All right. Okay.
From what I understand, it was about alligators. So it was exotic animals that somebody was afraid, because they were breeding exotic, exotic animals, and then that's how it all opened up the conversation, from what I understand. And.
Nope.
I just meant from this recent duck, duck incident, not the alligator incident, is what I was questioning.
No, it was the alligators, and then it opened up the conversation about what animals you can have, and then the urban farmer people showed up about, about chickens.
I believe it was.
Because it was domesticated animals only. So it, from what I understand, I personally, shoot, when you were talking, when I weigh those two options, and then if there was a judgment, and then we would have to revise the code anyway, why would we, I just wonder why we would not want to do it in a proactive way, instead of having them go through the stress of doing all that with little kids and stuff? So that's my only caveat, and really, honestly, I'm, I'm back to just, I feel like there's going to be a lot of food insecurity, and I have concerns that are bigger than this person that came and made the complaint.
Counselor.
That came and made the request, I'm sorry. And I also want to say that I do think that the community has changed quite a bit since that happened. Now we have a farmer's market, and we have appetite for food carts, and we have a mural on the side that you can see from the road, and a lot of things that weren't happening during the time of our former mayor. Thanks.
Counselor Perez and Pratt.
Okay, I'll speak to a few things. Well, first of all, the food thing, even our federal administration's telling us to do this to save money, so if we're talking about food. And I just did a quick search, and most of the cities that surround us, they use the term domestic fowl, and they, it's Portland, Sherwood, Tigerd, Wilson, the Lake Oswego, Westland, Happy Valley, Hillsborough, that's what they use the term domestic fowl. This whole going through the municipal court, I'm, I'm kind of getting, that's where I'm headed now, because it seems like we're just telling this gentleman, it's either no, or we're going to go through the same process that we're, or maybe even more lengthy process to get to the same point. So to me, it seems like more time for staff to go that route. What was I going to say? Oh, just the fact that it, if we could keep those same guidelines for the chickens for domestic fowl, I, I think that would be the route I would want to take, just to allow for this. And I guess in my mind, too, I don't, back when those, that chicken thing went through, that was a big trendy thing to do, and, I mean, maybe more people will do it, but right now, I, I can't imagine we're going to have hordes of people buying ducks and upsetting neighbors, so, you know, so I don't, I, I think we should just move forward and look at changing this language to domestic fowl.
Anyone else?
I just want to make sure that the gentleman that came last time to talk about ducks was here because of a complaint, right? Okay, so it had nothing to do with some alligator or anything like that, it was a complaint that someone said, there's a animal. So I just want to make sure I understood that correctly, because it feels like that we're talking about other things, but it was a complaint that some, a neighbor. So if one neighbor's complaining, I'm guessing when we start opening this whole thing, there's going to be a lot more coming, so, let's start to give you a heads up.
All right. I'm a firm no on this, but I'm in the minority, I can see. I lived through this before, I don't want to go through it again. And it wasn't the former mayor who put, was firmly against this, it was, all of the city council was not wild about this. And we ended up, you know, getting to the point where, again, we found an agreement we could live with, but none of us wanted it. We were told, we're living in a city, not an agricultural zone. If you want to have chickens and ducks and goats and pigs, you live in unincorporated Washington County. You don't live in an incorporated city in Washington County. And I'm a firm believer in that, so I'm a no, but it sounds like there's four votes here to move this forward. I'm, I'm assuming you're a no?
I feel like the resource, it sounds like a lot of for one change from one person that came. I think if we have more people coming with things like this, then I'm like, okay, there's a case for that, but, I mean, it's like the 0.01%, and we're making a lot of changes at staff time, staff resources, to solve no problem, a problem that's not there yet. And as I say, is there a problem that we need to solve? Because that's what we're here for, to solve problems within the community. And I feel like, to me, it just seems like a lot of, I, I can feel it, that it's a lot of work for something that, for one complaint. I think maybe a one, maybe if we have more, then I will consider the majority then wants this. But if I just, I mean, think about all the things that can happen, just by allowing one thing, because of one person out of 26,000 people. I don't know, that's, that's where my mind is, the math doesn't add up, and I just, I'll, I'll say no, let's just kind of see who else complains, or who else wants more ducks, or who else wants.
Pick me goats.
To change in this, that's just my thought. Thank you.
And what's the next oversight? What's the next animal that someone's going to come and ask for that was an oversight when we go through this process? So is there four folks to move this on? I see three hands.
So I'm, I'm no, and you as well.
Okay, so only see three. Nope, four, five, okay.
Question on clarification. So I heard a couple of different things. One, move forward with domestic fowl. Two, expand and think about what other animals should, could be included? How much community engagement?
Lot. This is a huge CIO effort, it's got to have a lot.
That's my question of.
I, for me personally, I, I think that just the quick search of the code just looked like a lot of cities surrounding us just use different language on this one particular thing. I don't necessarily think we need to expand that whole conversation at this moment, but I do know that it just seems like we're just in a minority, so for me, that's all that I'm looking at right in this moment.
Nope. That's what we're the CIOs for. Go ahead.
Okay, I mean, if you, what are you required to do? I mean, we have the public notice, we're, I mean, I, to me, this is not a huge change, if we can fall within the guidelines and call it domestic fowl, and if the requirements for the yard and everything could be the same.
So are, are you asking what are requirements for?
Well, then what is our requirement for public engagement?
For public engagement. So it would be a legislative change, and so, let's see, make sure I remember this. Newspaper advertisement, right? We'd put something up on the website. By taking it through the Planning Commission, that's our goal one, you know, public engagement. What I don't remember is if our code requires, like, a notice to CIOs for legislative, I don't remember that.
I believe it requires notice, but it doesn't require them to meet and, like, give us a recommendation on it.
Yeah, that's what, I want, I want the CIOs to be aware of it, I just don't know that, there's a. there's this expectation of this giant uproar. And I don't know that it's going to happen. If that happens, that, you know, there's more we have to deal with. But why, um, why plan for it when we don't know that that's going to happen? We already allowed the chickens, so that fight's done. So, we're just, uh, we're just making a change here to that existing code, basically.
So, that's, um, like the minimum engagement, right?
That would be up to you all to give us direction. So, perhaps, if you want us to come back with like a more extensive discussion about this, we could. Or you can give us direction now about do the minimum public engagement or noticing...
Being required.
And the process for a very, um, narrow change. Yeah. Or go through a more expansive discussion about what else are we missing? What are the other things you would like to be seen, or the community desires, which I, I'm not, so, we would love that direction before we get out of here.
Counsel Sacco.
From my, uh, my opinion is that we, I think the community's already had the discussion on the chickens and that this would just be a language change to domestic fowl and not to open up the conversation for, um, all sorts of other animals. Again, I said earlier, my, um, opinion is that this, you know, if it would've came before council before, that I can't, I can't understand a reason why it would have been excluded. And that I don't think that the same amount of public outreach would be needed. However, um, you know, I think with the public noticing, we'll hear from community members if it is a concern.
And it's that when we decide whether we should move forward or not? Or is it like, are you going to, I guess my, if I understand the process correctly, that will make more, uh, it'll help me make a better decision. Because what I don't want is that we go through all this and then in the end, it still is, we decide not to, I mean, I don't know what the staff time is and all that, but it seems like a lot just on what I'm hearing. I can just see the process in my head. Um, even for a language change, my understanding. I, I guess I'd like to be more clear. Can, can one of you kind of state a little bit the, how the process works if we want to make a change, whether just the, the, the two words? Or is it going to be like a whole extensive...
Sure.
Process?
Yeah, so, um, so going on the assumption that we're doing just like the required public engagement. So, that would be the noticing, um, the, you know, the newspaper, the website, that kind of thing. Where staff won't be spending any extra time, um, you know, doing an open house, or going out to neighborhoods, or putting up surveys, or any, anything like that. So, um, there, there's going to be some time commitment for some of that noticing, which we would kind of wrap into the, um, just the, the work of the legislative amendment. So, let's see that the behind the scenes pieces of getting the noticing out, um, editing the code, um, which I think that's probably just the two places, in the TDC and the TMC. And circulating that through staff, just to make sure we're on the same page. Let's say that that takes like, I'm going to say three months. I'm, I'm trying to build in some buffer, just knowing like, you know, things come up, we've got other work. So, the behind the scenes piece, we'll say, takes about three months. And then we get our, um, notice out to DLCD and our newspaper notice out that we're going to have a planning commission meeting. So, let's see, September, October, November, three months. So, then, let's say we have a planning commission meeting, it, um, probably not in December. So, maybe the planning commission meetings in January. They make a recommendation and then we bring that to you in February. And that's, that's about the timing. The, the amount of work on staff is really that behind the scenes front end. And then it's the staff reports and presentations for planning commission and city commission. Sorry, city council.
And when within that process, we can say, yeah, it's taking, maybe we shouldn't move forward because it's just taking too much time?
It wouldn't get back to you...
Once it starts, it goes...
Yeah. It would, I mean, it's not going to necessarily come back to you...
Until February.
Until February. It, unless you want, um, it, we could build in a check-in. So, that's going to push a timeline out. We could build in a check-in where we bring that like draft language to you. So, you can see like, okay, is this, did you get, staff, did you understand what we were saying? So, we bring that to you. And then, and then you could have an opportunity at that point to say, no, we don't want to do this. But i- if we're trying to streamline it and just make a simple change, like that's what I'm, that's kind of the timeframe that I'm thinking. And so, then by the time it gets to you in that public hearing is when you could say that, you know, you'd make a decision if you're going to adopt it or not.
Thank you.
I hope I didn't overcomplicate that for you. Sorry.
All right. So, what's your direction? Because I'm still a no. So, Counsel President, what's your motion for this?
Okay, I, I motion that, like, we go forward as simply as possible, still informing the public, but it, just with the, um, idea of making, as quick, closely as possible, just changing the word chicken to domestic fowl. That's where I'm at, you know? So, Kristen, did you, or sorry, Counsel.
Yeah, and I, I think we'd have to define domestic fowl too. Just, I mean, I don't know that, I completely understand what domestic fowl means.
I, I would say, I, I, it would be domestic fowl that fits within, like, I don't know if a turkey is the one I worry about here. But, um, you know, something that could be in the backyard and within the guidelines we currently have for chickens, that would, you know, keep neighbors as happy as possible and be reasonable.
Counsel Hillier was first. Uh, Counsel Sacco, are you done?
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry.
No, I'm fine.
Sorry. So, I'll be honest, I would prefer to push this through the legislative system because I then think it is a better way to do that. However, we were elected to do something when our community comes to us. And I think if we make it seem like it's an inconvenience, I'm not, I'm not feeling good about that as a counselor. And so, this is why I feel like it needs to go through a community process. I mean, we do that for other things. And I think it needs to be, from my perspective, the most streamlined possible. I did happen to be there in the very old Dave's Hot Chicken when basically that was where the city council met. I was there because of the marijuana topics. So, I sat through a lot of these. And this is a hot topic in the community. And I think, you know, it's going to be our opportunity to find out whether, you know, what the temperature is. And I think we owe the community to weigh in. So, that is why I'm voting yes. And I do believe that it needs to be the most streamlined as possible because there's a lot of other work. Yes, sir?
Oh, sorry, Counselor. And I, per your counsel rules, we don't take votes in work sessions. I, what I'm hearing is there's general direction to initiate a planned text amendment to, uh, change the, uh, Tuolatin Development Code to include domestic fowl along with the keeping of chicken provisions that are already in the TDC and regulations in the TMC.
We got to move on, Counsel Brooks. Make it quick, please.
Can we also say, keep it in line with the communities surrounding us? Then that will shorten things up.
That's what I heard as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, so that brings us to the agenda review. Uh, Counsel Hillier, you're up for the pledge tonight. Uh, any questions or concerns with the consent agenda, consent agenda tonight?
I, I do have one, uh, agenda that I, I would like to take out, uh, that I don't want to vote on, which is, but when it comes to the Tuolatin fee structure change. So, I would like to put that on its own vote. Please.
Uh, number six?
Yes.
Okay, so you want number six pulled and heard separately?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other concerns on the consent agenda? All right, so we've got about 15 minutes. I'll start with the roundtable and I'll start with Sherlin. And we'll see how many we can get in before seven. And then we'll continue the rest of them at the end of the council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, well, it's been a while since you've had a council meeting. So, uh, there are a number, several things I want to highlight. Um, put on your, on your dais, um, our water report, our water quality report. Um, take a look at that. Uh, so I'll just go through a few things. Um, from the library, the library will be closed on, um, Tuesday, November, or November, September the second through Friday, September the fifth. Um, we are doing a lighting improvement project and the entire panel has to be taken down. And, um, it's a necessity. We're communicating with our patrons. And, um, we will be doing some in-service training with our employees. We know it's an inconvenience and it's the only way to make it happen. Um, so, uh, we're going to get through it. Um, something else that's happening in the library that's super exciting, I don't know if you've heard about the Willamette meteorite. Um, the Willamette meteorite, big, Google it. It's a very interesting story. Um, the Ice Age Flood Institute, um, has a, a ten, what is it called? Like a, it, it's a replica. And they have given it to us as a permanent loan in the library. And so, it will be on display. And we're really excited about it. And, um, yeah, like, it's a, it's a really cool thing. Um, we are also doing a user survey in the latter part of August, um, out of the library. So, if you come into the library, make sure to, um, take the survey, or if you check out a book, or you're engaging with the library at all, um, please make sure to, uh, take that survey. On to parks and recreation. So, super exciting news are the, the meal program at the Poll Center is just going gangbusters. Um, Dustin reports that in July, we served 274 meals over eight days. So, an average of 34 meals per day, which is an increase of 325% over the previous month. Um, so, very exciting. Um, we're going to keep, uh, probably bring you back a report after six months and then look at, you know, what the future is from there. Three hundred youth utilized our summer camp program in July. Um, the street tree and missing tree inventory is underway and is moving along very quickly. Um, over 450 participants at Viva Tuolatin and the summer camps provided input on the design of the new playground at Tuolatin Community Park. So, we're moving forward with that. Um, the police department, uh, you're going to meet a couple of new police officers. We're very excited about them. We also have a new canine, Dreya. And I don't know if she will be here tonight. We do have an opportunity, well, hopefully, uh, we will bring her before you for, um, introduction, either tonight or the next council meeting. Um, she has already passed her certification, uh, with the Oregon Police Canine Association as a detection canine. So, very excited about that. Um, we used federal forfeiture dollars, speaking of our, um, detection canine. Um, this was under Tony. But we use them to, um, purchase new gym equipment for, in the police department to aid in our department's ongoing wellness efforts. And it's been very well received. And then we hosted, um, or the neighborhoods hosted National Night Out last Tuesday with over 15 events throughout the city. And that was very successful. Um, we're working on a grant from Homeland Security for $125,000, which will match with $50, uh, $50,000, I'm sorry, or $50, um, for badge access system here at the Tuolatin Community, or City Services Facility. Um, that is a really important project and one that we haven't had the money for. So, we're, um, excited about that. And that work will be completed likely by year end. Um, we celebrated National Intern Day on August 31st. Um, we have six interns in the city right now. Um, and, or we will, oh, no, it was September, July 31st. I'm sorry, July 31st, not August 31st. Um, and it was a, it was a fun event where, um, we have this great cohort that's coming together and, um, providing them a lot of, um, support. And they're providing us a lot of support. Uh, the Latino Business Networking Meeting, which maybe Counsel Reyes will talk about, was on August 7th. And I believe she was one of the featured speakers. So, uh, the CIO leadership meeting was on the same day, uh, Thursday, August the 7th. And Megan supports them. Um, just a couple other things. Building G at Lamb, just across the street, if you drive out that way, uh, you will notice that it is almost done. Um, they are due to get their certificate of occupancy, um, by August 29th. So, we're excited about that. And finally, the reservoir project, which is going on at, on, um, in the IBAC, uh, neighborhood, is at 90% plan review. And the plans go out to bid in October. And construction will start in, uh, spring of 26th. So, you will see that probably award the, of the contract, um, this, in October. So, yep, that's my update.
All right. Yeah, all right. So, with that, we'll go ahead and, uh, go ahead and conclude the work session for this evening. We'll do the rest of the roundtable at the end of our city council meeting. So, I'll go ahead and close this meeting and we'll reconvene for the full Tuolatin City Council meeting at 7:00. Toalton City Council Meeting, I'll go ahead and now call the meeting to order. First item on our agenda is a pledge of allegiance tonight led by Councilor Hillier.
Hi, please stand, remove your hats if you will, place your hand over your heart and join with me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated.
That brings us to announcements. We have two announcements tonight, two sets of new employees. Our first new employees, our new War Division staff, Levi Weldon and Mason Williams, and Terrence will do the introductions. Come on up, gentlemen.
There we go. It's gonna be a tight fit, Mayor. We'll make it work. You guys can hear me very well? All right. Mayor, City Council, how we doing tonight?
Good, how about you?
Doing good, doing good. I'm Terrence Lahey, Water Division Manager with City of Toalton and it's my pleasure to introduce two of our new hires here, Mason Williams and Levi Weldon. I'll, as our new water tech ones in our water division. Mason started on March 10th, Levi was March 20th and-
Been a while.
It has, it has. It's been a busy few weeks and, or months for that matter. And, quick background on Mason, so prior to Toalton, Mason was both a EMT and firefighter and also a coffee roaster. So, man of many talents and so you could say we like met at the hydrant, so to speak. And he's been a great addition. Mason's getting married on Saturday, so this is a big week, so all the fun preparation that goes in with that. So, got five days and, and so yeah, we're all excited for Mason. Loves going outdoors and lives here locally in Sherwood, which is nice for those fun after-hour calls, so. And then, my right is Levi here. Levi before working with us, worked as a tech with a paper shredding company and also his prior experience was working, putting in fancy like exotic pools and spas and stuff like that, so he's got a lot of plumbing experience. And he's happily married to his lovely wife, Allison, who was here to support him. And Allison is a detective for Portland, so she keeps them on the straight and narrow. And so, besides that, Levi grew up racing stock cars and building them, so his attention to detail was noticed at Bull Run in the beginning and so he's, they're both of them a great addition. He's a huge Utah Utes fan and they can no longer beat up on Oregon here now that the Pac-12 Conference is no longer existing, so. But as far as like work tasks go, both these guys as our water tech ones are learning all the ropes, you know, they're between Alan, some of you guys know Alan and Ernie, they've both been here for, you know, 20 and 35 years, so they got a breadth of knowledge. So they're just shadowing them around, learning all the aspects of water. One of the cool things about Toalton is that we're kind of a mid-sized city, so they really get exposed to all sorts of stuff, they're not getting pigeonholed into like one division. So, when it comes to like water sampling, doing mainline repairs, service line breaks, which happened this afternoon, they get, they're really getting exposed to everything. So, it's been a pleasure to get them on board, so, yeah.
Gentlemen, anything that you guys like to say?
Just happy to be here.
Same here, love it.
All right. Well, thanks for joining our team. There's several things, the community values here in Toalton, our parks, our library and our water system. We're still one of the folks that are still on Bull Run Water, so Terrence knows the system in and out. He skied when I became young councillor, young mayor. I got the tour of water from him, so he's working for a terrific supervisor, terrific water department. I welcome you to Toalton and hopefully you're gonna have long, long careers here and enjoy every day, you know, working here in Toalton. Thank you for joining the team.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time, everyone.
All right, now we have new two, two new police officers, Chief Pickering. We'll bring up Chase Charbonneau and Matthew Vorberg. Welcome, gentlemen.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to bring two new police officers here tonight for introductions. So, directly to my right is Chase Charbonneau, who, Chase started with us on July 21st and he previously worked as a tax administrator for the Oregon City Tax Service. He grew up in Irvine, California, graduated from Northwood High School and then received a bachelor's degree in sociology from Oregon State University. He also served in the Air Force for four years and was a, spent a short time as a reserve deputy with the Bend County Sheriff's Office. Chase enjoys spending time with his wife and his dogs. He's a movie enthusiast and enjoys playing Dungeons and Dragons. Seated next to him is Matthew Vorberg. Now, the name might seem familiar because if you might remember, this is the son of Michael Vorberg, who was a sergeant with our agency for a short time and is now working for the Grants Pass Police Department. But Matthew also started on July 21st. He previously worked as an office assistant to the academics department at the University of Oregon, so we decided to hire a beaver and a duck on the same day. One of them is smarter than the other, I won't tell you which one, so. Go Beavs. Originally, Matthew is from Grants Pass, moved to Newburgh at the age 10, graduated from Westside Christian. He received a bachelor's in psychology from the University of Oregon and also spent time as an intern with the DEA. So outside of work, he enjoys time spending with his girlfriend, he's, enjoys playing the electric guitar, hiking and working out. So, both of them are currently assigned to our training division. They will attend the Basic Police Academy starting August 25th, so we're excited to get them back and get them into the patrol division and get them started, so. You know, as our mantra, we like to hire good human beings and treat them, and train them to be police officers and these are two fine humans and we're excited to have them as part of our team.
Great. Gentlemen, the floor is yours. Anything you'd like to say?
I don't think so. Thanks for having us.
You're quiet.
I'm grateful to be here.
All right. Well, thank you both again for joining our local police department. We just had National Night Out, you didn't hear, we had over 10 National Night Out events here in Toalton, you know, for a small town, that's a lot. The art community very much supports our local police department. You know, Chief Pickering and his team is very much in support of community-based policing, being involved, kids knowing all the police officers, as many as they can, so I know he'll instill that in you if you already don't have that and that, look forward, again, just like the water folks, long career here in Toalton, that's a terrific department to be part of. You'll have lots of opportunities, start a patrol, maybe ride a motorcycle for a while, be a detective, all kinds of cool stuff you can do here in Toalton Police tomorrow. Just want to welcome you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
You guys, both gotta compete for number one spot at the police academy, so. No pressure. All right. That brings us to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the city council on an item that's not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in the room who would like to comment, I'll take those first and then we'll switch over to Zoom. Again, remember you only have three minutes. We have quite a few people who are here to talk about the Norwood Trees, so I'd ask you, if the person before you has already mentioned a point you were gonna cover, just say you agree with that person and then move on to your points, because we want to give everybody the opportunity to get, you know, their comments out. So I'll go ahead and start, I've got piles of paper here, and we'll start with Danny O'Neil. Welcome, Danny.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Appreciate the opportunity to address the council, a very personal concern of mine. Is Toalton really a tree city, USA? I've lived in the fine city here since 1995. I enjoy it and I enjoy being involved. My personal observation over the last three to five years, I've seen more and more of our older trees disappearing. Amongst those were all along Boone's Ferry Road, both sides of Toalton Sherwood Road are now construction, replaced with very wide concrete, there is no indication of trees being replaced. And the southeast corner of southwest Avery and Toalton Sherwood Road, there were large trees there that were removed and I haven't seen any indication of anything going back there and wondering why that happened. Now, the east end of Norwood Road, most of us are familiar with the Autumn Sunrise Development. Trees disappeared there and in my personal opinion, that was not necessary. Now, currently the tree grove on the west end of Norwood is in jeopardy. My personal understanding of the difference between the developers, placement of the curb, sidewalk, PGE easement and printer area, the developers' proposal allows for better protection and preservation of the tree grove on the south side of Norwood Road and still meet development conditions. Those conditions are allowed to be modified to protect and preserve wetlands and trees. The city's direction requires more area and places PGE utility easement closer to the trees and will not protect and preserve this out, old growth of trees. That's not just my opinion, that's the expert evaluation of a certified arborist consultant. My request tonight is for the city to take a closer look at the bigger concern of protecting our natural resources, trees in this case. We don't need or want another Autumn Sunrise fiasco. If the trees on the west end of Norwood are lost due to ill-placed sidewalks and PGE utilities, are we really acting like a tree city, USA? Thanks for your time and attention, this is a very visible issue. One question. Ask yourself, who will bear the responsibility and negative PR if we lose the Norwood Trees? And that's gonna be a neighborhood perspective. Thank you very much.
Next up, I have Julie Heronius.
Hi, my name is Julie Heronius. I'm a 25-year resident of Toalton and also Vice President of the Byram CIO. I'm here to speak for the trees along Norwood as well. During the Autumn Sunrise Development, we were promised that those existing mature trees would stay, but then they were cut down below the approved line. This led to dangerous instability, power outages and the permanent loss of our natural sound barrier. Ken Allen has protected, proposed a plan that protects the remaining trees while meeting city development goals and it's time we support developers who align with Toalton's values as Tree City, USA. Per the city's official website, it states, "This year, Toalton celebrates being named a Tree City, USA for the 35th time. The people of Toalton have long seen the health of its tree canopy as vital to their sense of well-being and the community's well-being. Trees aren't just landscaping, they're vital to our environment, property values and quality of life. Please don't repeat the mistakes of the past, support the plan that preserves the most trees." Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Carol Robinson.
Pass.
Pass, okay. Next, M. Roberts. Welcome.
Thank you, good evening. My name is M. Roberts. I represent Todd Prager and Associates Consulting Arborist Firm. We've been working on this project on Norwood Road and I'm an ISA certified arborist. A couple of highlights from the Arborist Report, which you'll hear about shortly if you haven't already seen it. No trees to be removed on grove edges is recommended and a minimum of 13 feet of tree protection zone where no right-of-way improvements, utilities, grading or excavation within that 13-foot protection area. Here's why. Industry standard is six inches to one foot of tree protection radius around trees to be protected in a construction zone and a minimum is that six inches of radius per one inch of diameter of tree. So the northernmost tree in this site is 26 inches diameter at standard height and that's where the 13-foot protection zone came from. The current city protocols do not allow for that amount of protection zone. Interior trees of a stand rely on exterior trees for wind protection and structural stability. Removing trees and/or removing or damaging roots of trees, of exterior trees, is severely debilitating to the entire stand. We've seen this before in the failures east on Norwood Road from, and in this current proposed project, we're hoping that that can be completely avoided by retaining all of the exterior trees in the stand. Those tree failures were a direct result of construction damage under rigid city protocols. So why do we care? Public safety and community benefits. Trees are vital infrastructure, filtering air and absorbing and filtering thousands of gallons of water in this stand of trees alone during each heavy rainstorm, which significantly reduces flooding and improves air and water quality for the city. Additionally, they provide shade on the adjacent path that they are next to. Mature trees offer exponentially greater ecological- to. Mature trees offer exponentially greater ecological and hydrological benefits than newly planted two-inch caliper trees. Retaining mature tree canopy and expanding housing are both achievable. Success lies in collaboration, flexibility, and creative problem-solving from all of us. Thank you to city staff, all of you, city council, developers, and community members that are here for engaging in early discourse on this project. Planning phase decisions are where success is built. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Hotson, is it Norwood? Right here? I think I read it. Hotson, you gone here? All right. We'll go back to that one, just in case. Brent Baby.
Oops. Sorry. I'm getting old. I fall over. Mayor, honorable councilors, thank you for listening to us tonight. This, again, is about the Norwood Road trees. You've heard some of these things before, but I'd like to reiterate some of them, because I think one of the messages is the most important thing. So, who here remembers the 100 mile an hour windstorm in 1997? Okay. So, it taught us a lesson about how we had done development badly by removing inconvenient Douglas fir trees. Portland was shut down for a week. So was power. Almost every new home in Durham had 100-foot-tall trees crashing into their homes. This was because many of the outer, stronger stabilizing trees were removed when they interfered with a new home footprint. This was a real event. This type of storm will happen again. It is not some remote theoretical thing that may happen. It's been a long time since then, and memories are short. Some people today have never learned this firsthand. This is what we will face if city engineers and policies prevail for the tree issue on Norwood Road. We already recently experienced this problem 100 yards down the road when an ARN AKS removed the stronger outer trees along Norwood and left only small, weak, spindly trees that did not survive a storm just a few weeks later, taking our power feed down with them as they fell. If you take nothing else away tonight, please know that the city plan for Ken Allen's development will cause this to happen. Ken's plan does not. Plus, it preserves the beauty, shade, light diffusing from the athletic field for the people that live along Norwood, and importantly, wind protection. Not least, our wildlife habitat, including bald eagles that live there, that I have seen personally grab squirrels right off of Norwood Road. So, when you decide this issue, I urge you to go with Ken's plan. Trees are more important than 12-foot sidewalks that may or may not ever fulfill a safety need. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Hula.
Except we're already being covered. Just wanted to say I support all the previous speeches. My wife and my family, strong support.
Okay, thank you. Dan Cobb.
One of the justifications, or review of the justification.
So, some of the justifications I've read for the city's plan is that we need a 12-foot sidewalk for safety, and we need a planting zone setback for safety, and we need a bicycle path for safety. And those are, the bicycle path clearly is a great idea, right? Toowalton High School, the sidewalk facing Toowalton High School is five and a half feet wide with no planting strip. It does have a bike path. And yet, there's been no significant accidents that I'm aware of, and I've lived right near the high school for many, many years. By the way, I've been living in Toowalton since 1983. So, I don't understand how the safety considerations that are in place for Toowalton High School regarding the width of the sidewalk and a planting strip are ignored for Toowalton High School, and they haven't had any issues. I don't think that a 12-foot sidewalk running along Norwood, as is in front of Autumn, the Autumn Sunrise Development, I don't see how that's necessary. And for the life of me, I don't see enough people on Toowalton, on that 12-foot-wide sidewalk. I mean, I see almost nobody on that sidewalk, me and a couple of neighbors. The volume traffic of pedestrian, bicycle traffic, and foot traffic just does not warrant such a massive layer of concrete. Concrete ruins whatever the heck it's laying on. Concrete is the enemy of a healthy ecosystem. It's a curse. And laying down concrete so close to existing trees that they hope will stand is ludicrous, because the root structure that all those adjacent trees need, they're all torn out, as your arborists have said. So, I don't, I don't fathom who on earth thinks we need 12-foot-wide sidewalks in there. I just don't get it. If you wander around the city of Toowalton, you don't see 12-foot-wide sidewalks almost anywhere. Maybe I'm blind, but they're just not there. So, it's disgusting. It's just horrific, and I hope you can care about the quality of life for people in the community by letting those trees remain. We lost big time with the previous development on Norwood Road. That was just a tragedy, and anybody could see it coming. Anybody knows anything about trees. I grew up in the Pacific Northwest, out in the trees, so I know. Come on, do the right thing. Just do the right thing for us.
Thanks, Dan. All right. So, I'm going to switch gears a little bit. Is there anyone in Zoom that's related to Norwood?
Yeah, Carly Case.
Okay, all right. Going to keep on the same topic here.
I think I was just unmuted. Hello, everybody. Thank you for your time tonight. Hopefully, you can hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. My name is Carly Case. I've lived here in Toowalton for 17 years. Thanks to the Autumn Sunrise Development, not only did we lose an entire 22-acre forest, don't know if you know how much that was. That was 22 acres. And as has also been mentioned, the last remaining line of Douglas firs along southwest Norwood bordering Autumn Sunrise. Additionally, because of the increased capacity needed to accommodate these developments, we hear that the line of trees nearest southwest Boone's Ferry bordering 9,300 Southwest Norwood Road, that will be removed anyway, basically to make the road wider for a dedicated left-hand turning lane on Norwood. Once this is done, there'll be very few mature frontage trees left after all of this. And as a community, we're asking the city for a compromise and to revisit city standards that preserve mature trees. I'm asking the city to commit to saving whatever we can, working with a willing developer to preserve the mature stand of trees and the root system, to keep what we can of our history and ecology. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, you're up.
Great, thank you. This is Tim Neri, Byram CIO president, and I just want to reiterate a lot of the comments that have been said so far. Really especially want to shout out to Danny O'Neill, who is the Byram CIO, land use officer. He spoke first tonight, and he has researched and been involved on this issue more than anyone could ever ask for. And he's done such great work in diving into this, on trying to understand the city's perspective, Ken's perspective about the trees. And the key piece of information that I keep coming back to, that Danny unearthed, was that when he pushed city engineers for, like, what plan are they going on? Are they basing this off of? What they sent Danny was the drawing, the plan that was put forth as part of the Autumn Sunrise Development with the AKS engineering stamp on it, it was very clearly the exact same plan that Autumn Sunrise used. And that plan clearly didn't work. It said it did on the front end, and that's what we were told. We were told it would be fine, and then, of course, all those trees fell, and then they had to be bulldozed. And while we've heard from the city manager about, like, a willingness to work together, until there's really a concrete plan for how the trees are going to be preserved, I mean, based on past experience, we're, we as neighbors and the neighborhood are pretty antsy and concerned about what's going to happen. So, we look forward to a real concrete plan from the city as far as, like, how they'll be preserved. And I encourage the city to consider options where utilities and the easement for them go either under the road or even cross the road to the north side of Norwood, where there's just, I don't know, 15- and 20-foot-wide stretch of weeds. So, that's all I want to say, and reiterate a lot of the comments you heard earlier. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. All right. So, is there anyone else who don't have to be signed up in the room or on Zoom who would like to comment? Come on up, sir.
I didn't plan on speaking, but I just can't help myself. My name's Dave Tully. I live on Stoner Drive. I live directly behind the football field. Those trees, I moved here from Canby. I took that home with my wife because of that beauty behind my home. I look at those trees every day, and how beautiful they are. I see bald eagles up there constantly. I see squirrels playing in those trees. I saw the disaster of Autumn Sunrise firsthand. Firsthand. I saw those trees come down. It made me cry. It was disappointing. I was here before you all. You saw me. I don't want to see this happen. There are trees behind us. It's just a terrible design. And the developers' design, I feel, is more than compromising for what needs to be had there. But to take those beautiful trees out will cause me to leave this city. It will definitely cause me to put my home on the market. The minute I hear that this is a done deal, and those trees are going out, that sign will go in my yard. I'm sorry. I love this community. I love living here. I raised my kids here. I have a stepkid that is doing wonderful in this city. She's doing fantastic. She's a realtor here. She sells a lot of property in the city. But this will cause a family problem for us, and we will be out of here. I don't want to see that happen. Please, think about it. Go with the developers' plan. It's really a good plan, and save our trees. Okay? Thank you.
Anyone else? Come on up, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Ken Allen, and I'm the friendly developer that's doing the townhomes, and also I represent Horizon School and Church. And before I get to talking about the topics of trees, I had some community news to share, and that is this past weekend, Horizon always does a back-to-school backpacks, and we were able to reach over 500 families that came into our school, and then we gifted all these families with backpacks full of supplies. So, just, you know, integrated part of the community. And why I say that isn't to bring attention to Horizon. They don't typically do that. But what we're trying to do with the trees and the safety factors isn't really about trees. It's about people. The gentleman just spoke. He's talking about livelihood and living here and lifestyle, and that, I'm an Oregon native. I actually came into this world on Columbus Day storm, so if anybody knows that storm, I've already taken care of many, many trees on my day of arrival, so don't really want to do any more. I will say, I've never been on this side of the table of this argument. I've been usually on the other side. And it's actually kind of refreshing to have the community's support, and I wanted to thank staff, because they've been very transparent with me. We've had lots of meetings, lots of emails, maybe too many emails, but I think we're, I even got a call this afternoon. I think we're moving towards a positive solution. But to Tim's point, we definitely need to bring that to a concrete plan. I still stand by our plan. You'll see in the arborist letter, I'm not going to go into the points, but the point a couple made earlier, you know, the sidewalk in front of the high school, pretty unsafe. And I can't really express the concern for safety more than telling you a quick story. We were down in California on a project, and we were living and coming and going with my family. We still lived here in Oregon, and some good friends of ours on the soccer team, they actually lost their two children from a drunk driver who went over the bike lane, over the planter strip, over the 12-foot sidewalk, and onto the bike path that's up here, probably 40 feet away. So, whether we're curb-tied, or 30 feet, or whoever, it's not going to stop that. So, the second picture I handed out is on Highway 43 in Lake Oswego. They have a decorative rail that also serves as a protector for pedestrians. There's a three-foot planter. You know, Highway 43, how fast do they go down there? 35, 45? Pretty fast. So, I'm willing, as a developer, to bring that kind of a solution all along Norwood in a partnership with the city to give us SDC credits, because I feel that would answer the safety aspect, bring some beauty to it, and still preserve the trees, which is really what we're all about. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'm Mary Lynn Westonhaver, and I've lived in Toowalton for 25 years this go-around. And I just wanted to say that we all know that as cities grow and develop, that we're going to lose trees. And it's still sad, even though it has to happen. But there are also times when it doesn't have to happen. So, if we can save some trees, like a big bunch of trees, why not? That's all. Thanks.
Boy, that's a pretty shot.
My name is Joost Ost. I've lived in Toowalton for 24 years, and my backyard looks out at the former trees that I used to look at, where Autumn Sunrise is built. And I'd like to compliment Ken Allen for having a plan that keeps the trees. And one of the things I've noticed is that because of the 12-foot sidewalk and the plantings that they did, is that they have to come and maintain it, mow it, water it, and I just think that's a waste of resources, when you could have trees that maybe need, needles break up once in a while. I think that's not good for the environment. And I also wonder why we need a 12-foot meandering sidewalk with grass, when something smaller could suffice, and we could keep those trees. I guess that's all I have to say. The other points were very well spoken to.
All right. Anyone else? Anyone pop up in Zoom? Oh, come on up, sir.
My name is Brian Beckstead. I live off Stoner Drive. Actually, right behind my house was the 23 acres of beautiful pine trees when I moved there. And after they were all gone, and before the houses were built, we had a windstorm come through that literally tore down just about every fence on the backside of that property. The two neighbors next to me actually had their fences cemented down, and it raised the cement blocks up, and they had to pay to have it fixed because of the strong winds that came through. I don't know. I live on that side, so I see that impact. So, I obviously don't want that for my neighbors on the other side. And it's just, I don't know. Everybody that's here that wants to support Ken's plan and keep the trees, just quickly stand up, so they know exactly how many of you are here. And thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anybody on Zoom? All right. So, then I'll move on to Kevin Mulvaney.
Thank you. Thank you, council. So, three weeks ago, when I came to you all and told my sad story of how we were told we weren't going to keep our ducks, I was moderately hopeful that what happened tonight at the work session would happen, that most of you were on board, and I appreciate all of you being on board. I also appreciate you going through the trauma of the duck law and not wanting to relive that. you going through the trauma of the duck law and not wanting to relive that. But to our point, I think it was Commissioner Brooks, or Counselor Brooks, said that, sorry, I'll get back to that. Flightless ducks are the same as chickens in terms of how dirty they are, how much noise they make. And the one thing flightless ducks have going for us is they can't get out of our yard. If you travel down Martin Ozzie Avenue, you will see chickens that belong to people who may have permits, they may not. Those chickens are walking down the road all the time, getting out of their yards. So that slight adjustment to the verbiage in the code, I know it is a lengthy time, you know, six months out to go through that process. But I imagine the the amount of actual work is minimal to get those changes made would help Twelton grow and allow people that maybe aren't looking for backyard fowl as food source, but as companion. We love our ducks just as much as we love our rabbit and our dog and our cat. We will get food, and I'm happy to give duck eggs away, because we can't eat that many in our house. But looking at it from less of a food source, it is a food source, it is a comfort source. And they are pretty low-impact animals to the neighbors. They do quack. They do look like they want to fly, but they can't. They do spread feathers, which I understand could, you know, people with allergies might have that. But I think the change of times, that's where I was getting at, the change of times and attitudes about what is a backyard animal. Chickens are great. Our neighbors have had chickens. And this new idea of what else can be a pet in the backyard, as long as we foster reasonable and responsible backyard pet ownership. It's not an alligator, it's not a wild dog or a cat that's climbing into other people's yards and fighting with their cats. Flightless ducks, and there's only about seven species out of the 140 worldwide species of ducks, can't. They can't do that. They can't really impact the neighbors. And they would abide by the same rules as the chickens. 10 feet from the neighbors, 20 feet from their house, keep them in a pen. They love being in their their enclosed space at night, so they don't pose any different problems than chickens. So thank you very much for all of your time and that conversation. Continue to give me hope that we will be able to keep our pets for the future. So thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Rob Drake.
Good evening, Mayor Bubinick and City Council. I am Rob Drake, and I'm here as Chair of People for Libraries. The Washington County has brought forward a Cooperative Library Services, Washington County Cooperative Library Services, an operating levy for the November 4 election. It is a replacement levy for the current funding, and it will be like the current one, a five-year duration. The levy is approximately 45% of the revenue for the 16 libraries in the county. And if this measure is lost, it would be devastating. I mean, look at your own city budget. If you suddenly overnight lost 45% of it, it would be a dark place to be. The cities benefit immensely from this measure. The measure helps fund many aspects of full library services in the county. I'm here to ask that the city pass a resolution of support for the funding measure. I provided you a draft, which you're welcome to use or not. I borrowed from one we brought forward in 2000. It's a model resolution, and it is ballot measure 34345. And I know there are some issues right now, working out the final formula. But that's something internal to the measure itself. And I think what's most important is to get this passed. And any help you could provide would be, I think, welcomed. I'd be happy to happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Rob.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So anyone else who would like to come on up and do citizen resident comment on anything that's not on the agenda? You already did, Dan.
Thanks.
No, you already did. You already got one shot. That's it?
No.
Is it a different topic?
Chicken.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So, does the city allow chickens?
You gotta be at the, we can't hear you. They have to hear you on the mic.
The city allows chickens.
Yes.
Wow.
And and now we're going to thinking about adding ducks.
That's the request.
I see. I'm amazed that we allow chickens. I've lived in a neighborhood, actually, it's a rental. The neighborhood had had chickens. They they got out constantly. The feed from the chickens attracted lots of rodents. So the entire area was was kind of overrun by mice and rats that tended to live in tunnels underground under our landscaping. So when I went out to redo the landscaping, rodents spread in panic. And the chickens, as I said, were all over the place. They would jump up onto the back deck of the house and ping on their reflection on the sliding door. Out of what competition, I suppose. I don't know. It's amazing to me that we allow chickens. I just do not think that's a great idea. But adding to that ducks, I don't know. I think we really should rethink this whole poultry thing in a city of this size. I just can't believe.
Thanks, Dan. Anyone else? All right. Turning back to Norwood, I know as of Friday, city staff was still working with Mr. Allen on a plan. And the latest I heard was that some progress was made and that we were awaiting a new plan from Mr. Allen that addresses some of the city's concerns. With that, I'm just going to have Mike come on up and just give a quick update, and Aquila, if you'd like, on the synopsis of the Friday meeting.
Good evening. I'm Mike McCarthy. I'm the city engineer.
Hi, good evening. I'm Aquila Hurd Ravitch, the Community Development Director. And yes, we met with Ken, I think it was actually two or more Fridays ago. Anyway, it was a couple of weeks ago. And we have started working on, you know, a plan that could meet his needs as well as the conditions of approval. And we think that there's flexibility in the land use decisions that were already issued, and those conditions that will allow him to meet the conditions as well as preserve the trees. And we, I think we voiced in that meeting that we are in agreement with Ken and that we want to preserve the trees as well. And so we're really just looking for his plan that can bring all that together.
Thank you. So just to make it really clear, we are committed to preserving the trees. And when last we met with Mr. Allen, we left it that his team is working on their design plans, and that we would then be working with him on those plans, on how to fit the, you know, the walkway and plantings where they can fit without impacting the root zones of the trees and the issues that would be with the trees. So we'll be working with Mr. Allen, with the, you know, with his arborist, and to figure out the specifics for how we can make this work and preserve the trees and meet the land use requirements that Mr. Allen's developments legally require to meet and meet city codes for good transportation facilities. So we are working together. I believe we'll be able to find a good solution that will preserve the trees, that will have a good design and a good place for people to walk, and that we can meet these goals. But to be completely clear, we are committed to preserving the trees.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
All right. So that will concludes tonight's public comment. I very much appreciate everyone coming out tonight. You're welcome to stick around for Sheriff Massey's request about the levy. We've got a couple of county commissioners here to talk about the library levy. So you want to stick around and hear about those things, please feel free. If you want to leave, go ahead and do that now. All right. That brings us to tonight's consent agenda. Those items on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be adopted by one motion unless someone on the council would like one of them removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight's consent agenda consists of item number one, consideration of approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of July 14, 2025. Item two, consideration of resolution number 5898-25, awarding the contract for the construction of the Nightbrook Creek Trail to Nutter Corporation. Item number three, consideration of resolution number 5899-25, authorizing the Second Amendment to the agreement between the City of Twelton and Randall and Karen Alstad for management and operations of Basalt Creek Parkland. Item number four, consideration of resolution number 5900-25, authorizing the First Amendment to the agreement between the City of Twelton and Marguerite Robb for the management and operations of Riverfront Parkland. Item number five, consideration of resolution number 5901-25, authorizing the First Amendment to the agreement between the City of Twelton and Dan Cash and Marsha Riley for management and operations of Riverfront Parkland. And finally, item number six, consideration of resolution number 5903-25, amending the City of Twelton fee schedule and rescinding resolution number 5871-25. Earlier tonight, work session, Counselor Gonzalez mentioned that he'd like item number six removed from consent and heard separately later tonight. Are there any other changes?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda except item six. Ezra, second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions on the motion to approve the consent, Ezra, with the exception of pulling item number six? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. All right. Moving on to special reports, Washington County Libraries presentation. I'm going to take Sheriff Massey, because she keeps fanning herself back there. I know she's toasty. Sheriff Massey, come on up.
Wow.
And District Attorney Barton, welcome.
Yes.
Hello.
We got to get you a little fan, you put a lot of stuff on.
Put me to work, and I can fan you.
Oh, my gosh.
Commissioner Snyder, welcome.
Oh, good evening, Mayor and council members. I really appreciate you giving us the opportunity to talk a little bit about the local option levy coming on the ballot in November. We're really looking forward to sort of doing a little bit of education. But we're going to zoom through the slides so that we can spend more time making sure that what we talk about and what's what this includes is meaningful for you. So we'd like to spend more time just responding to questions that you might have.
Well, good evening. I'm Kevin Barton. I think I had a chance to speak with many of you in the past, on the DA, of course. And I want to echo what Sheriff Massey said. So before I dive into the first slide, I do want to take a moment and say the topic of trees and ducks is actually relevant to what we're going to talk about here today because, here's the segue, when I think of our public safety system, it's an ecosystem. And for the ecosystem to work correctly, everything needs to be in equilibrium and to be balanced. And that means I can't do the work I do in the DA's office without an adequately funded and well-run sheriff's office. And the sheriff and I can't do the work we do without our Community Corrections Department, who supervises people who've been convicted of crimes, without them having adequate funding and resources. And they can't do the work they do without our Juvenile Department, who deals with youths, typically teenagers, who are find themselves on the wrong side of the law, making bad decisions as kids and as teenagers. But we know that we have an opportunity to rehabilitate them and to turn them around in the right direction. All of those public safety systems and component pieces need to work together like the ecosystem with our trees and our ducks and everything else to make everything work in balance. And so in that sense, I think that today's topic is actually relevant to what we're speaking to you about here in a moment. So we have several slides, and I'll just dive through a few of them. We're talking about essentially a replacement levy. So this will be a new levy with an increased amount. For the average homeowner, some later slides will get into this, but it's roughly $6 more that we're asking the average homeowner to pay. It's 66 cents per assessed $1,000 of value for property. It will raise, we believe, an estimate of about $337 million over a five-year period. I'll take the lead on this next slide, then I'll pass the baton. So a broad brush stroke snapshot of how our levy funds our criminal justice, public safety system, about 16% of our public safety ecosystem is funded by the local option levy. The remaining 84% is funded by other sources. The largest single other source, of course, is the County General Fund. But this 16% is absolutely critical to doing the work that we do. It makes sure that our jail can function adequately, makes sure the sheriff has patrol officers who can respond all throughout the county, including in the cities, like our mental health response teams and other important resources. It ensures that when your Twelton police officers, chief pickings, people go out and make an arrest, when your Twelton residents call 911, or your Twelton businesses witness a crime occurring, that there can be room at the jail for them to be housed, and that there can be a prosecutor in the DA's office to prosecute that crime, and a victim advocate to support the crime victim, and a Community Corrections Officer to make sure that that person's adequately supervised. So it does all of those things. To the right of the screen, of course, we try to summarize some of those things and to highlight them. So prosecution, countywide law enforcement services, probation and parole, juvenile. And I want to highlight one last piece there for you too, is support for domestic violence victims. One piece that our levy has funded in the past and will continue to fund in the future is support for our Family Justice Center. This is a countywide resource. It's a nonprofit that provides resources for domestic violence survivors, sexual assault survivors. And when a new building is open here in January, will also include child abuse victims and survivors. So it's one-stop shopping for all of those victims and survivors. Also will be funded by levy dollars, which is so important to making sure our ecosystem flourishes.
All right. Where do you want to go?
I'm here for questions.
Oh, you're here for questions. I love knowing this. This is beautiful. Okay, so let's touch on a few things that this levy will do. It's going to provide those resources that the district attorney just talked about, investigating and prosecuting crimes, not just those most violent crimes, but those crimes that directly relate to our livability. Theft, break-ins, graffiti, car theft, those are the things that are instrumental in making sure that people feel safe in their neighborhoods and their homes. And it's really, I think, in all of our cities here in Washington County, the reason why people enjoy living here so much, because the livability in Washington County is really exceptional. It will allow for the district attorney to ensure that they can not only prosecute child abuse and child pornography-type cases, but add additional resources. It's important to mention, I believe, that our child abuse reports have increased by 17% over the last few years. And we don't see that piece going down. And so it is incumbent upon us to ensure that we have the resources necessary to be able to hold those offenders accountable and to provide the services that they need. Another thing for me is that this levy will allow us to not just maintain the services that we are providing, but expand upon those services and ensure that we are providing more robust programming and services for our community, like expanded victims assistance and emergency programs for families harmed by domestic violence, and for essential interagency teams, like our West Side Interagency Narcotics Team, our WIN Team, who removed about 1.3 million fentanyl pills over the last three years. And while I understand we can't quantify a negative, if one pill can kill, can you just imagine how many lives have been saved through those interagency efforts and the dedicated deputies who are on the street doing the interdiction to keep those things from coming into our community? And this is one thing that's that's really near and dear to my heart. I know that I have spent time with all of you before, and that the providing a county jail is a statutory requirement of the sheriff. The Washington County Jail is, in a very biased fashion, the most professional, exceptional jail that I've seen. And I say that having come from a jail previously on the East Coast. And the services that we provide to include things like mental health services for adults in custody, critical program- adults in custody, critical programming like GED and things like that, allow for us to ensure that, in our way, keeping the community safe helps us ensure that we are putting a better adult in custody back out into the community, a more rehabilitated adult in custody who might be on critical medications, so that the community is safer than they were before they came into custody. Our county jail has not been operating at full capacity. Previously, it was due to staffing issues, but we have really turned that around, and currently it is due to critical infrastructure repair. The Washington County Jail is the smallest jail per capita at its current service level in the entire state. However, we are the second-largest county in the state by population. And so this levy will allow us to continue to expand those efforts and to get these critical infrastructure repairs done so that we can provide more bed space for those people that actually really need to be in custody.
Sure. You know, thinking about if we expand, if we increase the dollar amount for the levy, what will allow us to do to continue to do, and also how will it allow us to expand the work that we do? I'd like to talk a little bit about the mental health response team. I'm assuming that this is not the first time any of you have heard of the mental health response team, but if it is, I'll just tell you, it pairs a licensed clinical social worker with a patrol officer, and they can go out anywhere in the county to provide an alternative response. It's invaluable. I actually did a ride-along a few years ago with the sheriff's office out with their MHRT team, and within maybe the first 20 minutes of our shift, we went out to the city of Beaverton. They go to any city. And it provided the Beaverton officers with another option, rather than making an arrest and going to jail, there was a man that was clearly in a mental health crisis. And being able to see that firsthand was very eye-opening. So I'd encourage you, if you haven't had the chance to do a ride-along, whether it's with the MHRT or somewhere else, it really gives you an idea of what type of resource there is. Maybe the most critical question is, how is this going to impact the average homeowner? And so as I alluded to earlier, it's about $6 more per month for this replacement. Everything's going up. The last thing we wanted to do would be to say, hey, raise taxes, that's not a good thing. We're property taxpayers as well. However, we can't continue to do the work that we do without increasing the levy amount. So the dollars and cents are there on the screen for you, but for the average home with the assessed value of about $350,000, they would pay just under $20 a month or $230 a year. This, of course, is the parade of horribles. What happens if the measure does not pass? And I'll just tell you, I don't know. It would be really, really bad. We lose not only the funding, there'd be massive layoffs, there'd be critical cuts to the public safety infrastructure in Washington County. The system would not look tomorrow the way it does today, and it would erode a sense of safety that we have built up here over the years. And once eroded, it is very difficult to get that back. I think we know that from looking at our neighbors. Let's see. This is a summary slide. So I think we can maybe segue into some questions if you all have questions for us. And what we're looking for is just your support, and we would love the opportunity to answer questions you have, though, and if there's anything we can do to help you support the levy, we'd love the chance to do that as well.
Commissioner Snyder, do you want to say anything? Just field of questions.
Well, I again want to reiterate what my colleagues presenting tonight have already said, and we really do want to try to meet all of our communities' needs throughout Washington County and do want to earn and have the support of the Twalton City Council.
Questions? Counsel Ritz.
Oh, thank you very much for your presentation. I was just, I'm just curious, because it is shocking that you said child abuse was up Number one, why? Is there a reason? And number two is like, are there any like educational piece, part of this, is there any educational to teach parents how to be parents or have like, like what is the goal to get that down? If it went up 17%, how can you get it back down to 17%? I mean, I'm just, it's just mind-boggling that we just say so loosely, oh, it went up 17%. I feel that is shocking, so.
I agree with you, by the way, that it's shocking. Please know, the reason that's included is because it's shocking and because it's true and because it's a significant priority for us to dedicate more resources to. I'll speak just a little bit about what we are doing and hope to continue doing and expand, and then I'll give the DA an opportunity because he has a large piece of this as well. But our, for instance, our public affairs team is out in the community constantly giving these presentations and education. I'm working specifically with sheriff's office advisory boards to reach communities that I might not have direct access to or not know exactly what they need from us by way of education. And then we are doing a significant amount of work, even if it's unrelated to child abuse, but someone's in custody and they need some sort of parenting classes, those are things that we offer as a way to teach people alternative responses when they're in crisis and aren't able to manage whatever it is in their family that is causing them to move down this path. But it is, it has to be a holistic approach, not just the sheriff's office, not just the DA's office, not just community corrections, not just juvenile. And then I will say lastly, that I believe, while I do not have data with me to affirm it, that people are also reporting more frequently than they ever have before. Now that kids are back in school and it's not COVID, they have more access to those, you know, mandatory reporters, teachers, counselors, nurses that are identifying this than they did the previous years where COVID was in existence and so many kids were out of school.
Well, I was a child abuse prosecutor for roughly the 10 years before I was elected as DA, so this is an issue that I've spent a lot of time thinking about, and the sheriff's exactly right. So child abuse reports are up. That doesn't mean child abuse occurrences are up. In fact, I don't believe that child abuse occurrences are dramatically as increased as the reports are. Ironically, this is going to sound weird to say, it's a good thing when reports are up because that means we're finding out about more of it. I know that sounds odd to say, there's actually a significant disconnect between reported crime and actual crime for most crime categories. The exceptions to that are car thefts. Usually, most people, when their car is stolen, they'll always report it. Even the criminals will report it because cars are so expensive, you need to file a report in order to make an insurance claim, right? But some crime just doesn't get reported, domestic violence, sexual assault, child abuse. And so we've done a lot of work, and actually the levy has funded a lot of this outreach work. We have these things, they're called MDTs, multi-disciplinary teams, where we bring together people from a variety of disciplines, schools, healthcare providers, prosecutors, CPS workers, police officers, and we try and sit around and look at an issue from a 360-degree perspective. How can we get people to report this more? How can we raise awareness? How can we teach parents about how to keep their teenagers safe with phones? I've got three of them, and I still can't figure that one out. But the more we can do to get the increased awareness and the increased reports, the more we can find out about the problem that's happening. So I actually see it as a slightly encouraging sign when we know what's happening because it lets us dig into the issue. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, no, that was actually a lot, I guess because it was said so like, so I'm like, oh geez, you know, that really like sparked an interest in why it went up and now that you're saying it's because of reporting, there's more access to people that, you know, can help kids understand what, or like parents understand how to be, at least, like you said, the response, I like what you put it, different responses to some kind of reaction or, you know, to children.
So people can respond differently.
Differently, right. Yeah. And the education part to me is really important because I think that's what leads to responding if you don't have the education and the tools, what to do when you're in that situation where you don't, you're, I guess child abuse, I always think of like violence, but it could be different things. So yeah, I guess, yeah. Thank you.
Now, what we have seen an increase in is children exposed to drugs, and that is dramatically increasing. So that, I don't want to sugarcoat things and say, there are some increasing challenges that we're seeing today. So that is a real factor and a real challenge for us.
Thank you.
You bet.
President Prent.
Hi.
And then Counsel Hillier.
Get ready, Commissioner Snyder.
Okay.
Easy to me. Our mayor, with his Washington County Coordinate Committee, he is for, the whole time we've been on council telling us of your dire straits at the jail especially. So I understand the need for this, and, you know, our, the big concern here is that people are, you know, we just passed a school levy, we're going to talk about library levy, and people are not, their costs aren't covering. So that's the concern, but I understand this need and that we need a jail at full capacity. So, on to Commissioner Snyder. I know you guys had a huge budget shortfall, but I was very concerned, $7.1 million you cut from this budget, and my concern, I guess it's more of a statement, is that going forward, if this passes, that we're not going to see this again the next year and the next year in your county budget.
Well, I don't think there's ever going to be a guarantee I can provide for you indefinitely in the future. The commission is working really hard to try to figure out how to stabilize the county funding on a more long-term basis. The entire commission that's currently in place has provided very clear direction that we want to be on that path, and we are on that path. I want to be clear about that. Part of that path, though, involves shoring up the financial resources that are available to continue providing the critical resource, providing the critical services that we need to provide, in this case, public safety. I think you're going to continue to see a struggle as we work through a number of areas and try to figure out how to make those financially sustainable in the long run. Some of that is caused by the large number of sort of urban unincorporated areas. I was talking to another commissioner earlier today about that and what that, the challenge that poses. That's a little different than what we're talking about today, but it does, it really does pose a significant challenge for the county and frankly, for the services that many of those urban unincorporated community members expect.
As a former city elected, I'm sure you understand that we have concerns about that, too.
Yes.
Well, thank you.
Counsel Hillier.
Thank you very much. So I'd like to place the lens on stopping the pipeline a little bit. I appreciate why you've chosen Family Justice and chosen the parts of the circle that you've chosen, but District Attorney Barton, I've sat in many meetings with you around ACEs and that effort, I didn't see really go anywhere, which was too bad, and maybe there's an update on that, other than I think no closed door, I think is the only outcome that came out of that countywide effort that I'm aware of, and I...
Oh, are you speaking of maybe a year or so ago, there was this countywide ACEs convening?
There were multiple, yes.
Well, the convening of multiple meetings.
Yes.
So the Family Justice Center is, will become the Family Peace Center, they're changing the name with the focus on ACEs, which is adverse childhood experiences. The idea being, of course, that the more work we can do for young people who've experienced trauma, the greater benefits we can have down the road where they avoid falling into things like homelessness or addiction or criminal behavior. So the Family Peace Center is actually, I think, one of the positive things to come out of those ACEs convening meetings.
I understand that, and I applaud that whole entire effort. But as we consider the continuum of care of how people are getting there and how that education works, I guess I would just like to say that it's something that I would love in the future for you to consider, that the substance use prevention programming around the, you know, we, those programs have been eliminated basically by the federal government. There are cuts here, there, and everywhere that are going to continue to impact your pipeline, and I don't see really any efforts on any part, like the county has made it 10 times more difficult to sign a contract to get to work with the county, and I know Commissioner Snyder and I have talked about that, certainly hasn't gotten any better. But I do think that, you know, we're talking about sustainability and impact on the youth and families in our communities, and I think we have to look more systemically and more broadly on that continuum of care when we're asking communities for dollars. And I understand why this is a specific scope, but I'm really disappointed that we can't be more holistic.
So you want to see, I mean, what I'm hearing you say is you want to see more upstream primary prevention so that we're not having so much downstream
You bet.
...work for these two fine leaders.
Absolutely, because we are not, we are not gonna, through the legal system, get ourselves through this.
Arrest and convict our way out of this.
Exactly. And I know that the state has recently passed some legislation around primary prevention through the Alcohol Drug Policy Commission. I know everyone wants to focus just on fentanyl, which is, you know, I understand that, one pill can kill, I understand all those things. But I think when you're looking at a city like Twalton, who is one of the farthest communities from city seat or county seat to get resources and those sorts of things, investing in more systemic ways to improve the health outcomes and all the social determinants of health for our community members, we have to look more broadly. And so I just would like to say that.
I don't, I don't think you'll get disagreement from any of the three of us, but the ability to fund additional programs right now is very strained by the conversation we were just having. I think there's ways, particularly on the, on the public health side, that the county could lead more efforts but would need more resources to do so.
Okay. Thank you.
I live in Sherwood, so just about as far from the county as Twalton. So I'm with you.
Well, yes, I think there are a lot of creative solutions that could be, come up with, and I would really encourage you to, after this election, reach out to some people working in some of these areas and find ways that maybe we can have some grassroots efforts because we all understand that we need public safety, we need the services that you all provide. That is not what I'm saying. But I think if we continue to look at just a point in time, we are not ever going to get there, and we are going to fail our kids. And one last thing, you know, you can make data say about anything, so I'd encourage you to be really careful about that slide. I think that that could be really traumatizing for people about the 17%. You need to, you need to add some language to that, in my opinion.
Counsel Sacco, you have, Counsel Brooks.
Thanks for coming and presenting. I appreciate the need, and I've had an up-close look at the community corrections since I worked there as a social worker and helped families that were involved in a drug treatment program that was going on until COVID. And as a social worker, as a clinical social worker, and as a community practice social worker, I have a lot of the similar concerns that Counselor Hillier just mentioned. My first question, there's a few things that kind of jumped out at me when we were speaking today. One was, if we could look at the slide that had all the pieces on it. So we're looking at this 16%, and then we have this list of prosecution, countywide law enforcement, et cetera. And I'm just curious in those, what percentages these budget numbers are. I think that when we have these conversations, especially at this level, it's really important to understand the percentage of money that's going to different things. We have ride-along mental health here in our police department, who we get to share with Tigerd once in a while, every, you know, which is really great in addition, but to me, it's not the infrastructure that's needed around mental health. And my biggest concern right now is that we are facing drastic changes and cuts to our state that's going to outsize federally, that's going to outsize a lot of the things that we do to support our community. And I'm just curious what the thinking is around how does this department integrate and help people that may be dealing with poverty issues, like petty thefts and those types of things, especially when we're cutting so much. I'm also really concerned about, like we just heard about the increasing rate of homelessness, where we have an eviction rate now without eviction per where we have an eviction rate now without eviction prevention programs, that's going to be, we have like fif- 15 people being evicted and 10 people being housed. So we're going the wrong direction, no matter if we're building all these units or not. Um, and then, of course, we always have that conversation here about how does, um, our community interact with the services that are available? So I don't know if probation and parole has, um, become more electronic for check-ins, or if people have to take a bus across town to Hillsborough to meet their officer while they're trying to do their DHS stuff for their kids, while they're trying to do their housing, you know what I mean?
That's, on, on that point, Counsel Brooks, I'll just share that we're working very hard to, um, bring the community corrections, uh, efforts in our county sort of up to current expected standards, which involve making contact in the community. That's a, uh, somewhat of a change in approach from Washington County in the, in the past, and is in part because of the really serious nature of many of the crimes that have been committed by people that are on, uh, being supervised in the community corrections area. And that is something that we, we need to do, and we know we need to do, but it requires additional resources. It takes more time to go find and visit someone in their home and see what's going on than it does to call them up or send them an email, which in the past has met the state's standards, but does not meet the mark.
Right. So I am not saying that it should be, um, less robust or more robust. I'm saying that the touchpoints, um-
Should be more convenient.
Be, um-
And accessible.
Should be accessible equally to, no matter where you live in this county. That's what I'm saying.
Got it.
So I don't want to, it's not about giving somebody a boost that doesn't deserve a boost or any of this kind of stuff. Um, and then I, uh, I'm also, like, um, some of the things that we talked about as well were about, um, the, uh, need for, that youth can, um, be rehabilitated. And, and I also think that adults can be rehabilitated, and I brought up people that are adults.
That, that's the primary focus of our, uh, Community Corrections Division. If you look at their mission and purpose, it is that.
I think it's important to say it when we're presenting, though, too, as well, because-
Appreciate that.
It's, um, it sounds, it's, to me, it sounds strange to just hear about kids and their possibilities, um, and not adults and their possibilities. So, and then I'm just curious about, as we face these cuts, and as people face more and more dire circumstances around, um, poverty outcomes, and what we're going to be facing as these cuts come through our communities, is there a way that we are going to be strategic around working with people that are falling on hard times, that are not getting the health that they need when we have a really limited infrastructure that is going to continue to become worse and worse?
I mean, you and Counselor Hillier are both bringing up, in my mind, some of the most significant issues our country has-
Yes.
-in, uh, both mental health and the way that we treat and support people with both mental health challenges and also with substance use issues. Um, you're bringing up poverty, and to me, that's an income distribution problem, and you're bringing up houselessness, which is interspersed in all of that. I will just be very honest with you. We, as a public safety levy, are not going to solve all those problems in Washington County through this levy. I think that they need to be solved. I want to continue working to solve them, and I think the county commissions, county commission, the city councils all have a role, and so does the federal government in all of that. There are a lot of things that need to change for all those things to get solved, but it's not going to be all through, unfortunately, the public safety levy.
No, I don't think it will all be through the public safety levy, but I'm curious about what the public safety levy is going to bring to that conversation, and if that's been thought through that way, especially as these times are changing.
Yeah, where, where it can support-
Where it can, and where we're planning for the future of it needing to, because we're going to be in a very different situation, and I don't think pe- people have not buckled up yet.
You know, um, uh, these are wonderful comments, and I agree with everything that's been said, uh, because we absolutely want to get upstream to address these issues. I, I want to emphasize, and I just want to raise a little bit of an alarm bell. Um, our public safety system in Washington County is not doing very well right now. Um, and so, to give you an example, there have been over 2,000 people this year so far released from the jail due to overcrowding. There's not enough room. These are 2,000 people charged with crimes who a judge has determined should be in the jail. The, the law presumes they should remain in the jail. You would want them to be in the jail. I get an email every Sunday telling me who's getting released, and, uh, it's sobering to see that. Uh, that's just one data point. Um, the prosecutors in my office, we get about 12,000 criminal cases that come to us every year from throughout the county, including Tuolton. Our caseloads are about double the caseloads of our counterparts in Multnomah County. We only have 47 attorneys' positions. We should have somewhere closer to 60 to 70. Multnomah County, to put it in perspective, has somewhere in the high 90s. Um, our caseloads are very comparable to Multnomah County in terms of total volume of cases, but we have about half the personnel to process it. And those are just a couple data points to, to mention to you. So, um, as much as we want to try and be upstream and preventative and want to do that, when we were constructing this levy, every cent, we were thinking, okay, how much more can we get to do all the good work? But then how much more can, of a burden can we put on the taxpayers, um, because we know times are tough?
It's a balance.
And it's such a difficult balance. We didn't start off at 66. I forget where we started off, it was 50 something. Um, and so I struggle with what's the right amount. Boy, if we had 67 cents instead of 66, we could do a little bit more, more prevention, and be amazing. But, um, every bit more we, we ask, we're pulling money away from taxpayers, and that's food on the table for a lot of families and tough times. So that's the balance we tried to strike, and I, I hope to God we got the right balance. But, um, just wanted to give you that perspective, that the system is not doing very well right now. It's a struggle.
We made an adjustment right at the, to be honest, uh, right at the tail end. We were, we were going to move forward with 65 cents, and there were some critical services that were sort of more in the, in, I would say, the, um, not direct in the, you know, arrest and prosecute space, and we made the decision to, and I actually, I think it was a, a little surprising to some members of the levy, uh, leadership team, we made the decision to go one extra cent so that we didn't have to make that choice, because we didn't like that choice. Um, but where do you draw the line? There's always that question. You all struggle with that, with your own decision-making, and, and we felt like this was the, the place to draw the line for now, try to shore up what we have.
Okay. I, um, I appreciate that, and there's nothing in me that says that we shouldn't have a strong, um, levy that works. So I am asking these questions out of curiosity, because I don't know a lot about how this is designed, and when I have that, that doesn't give me a lot of information about where those percentages are going, so I think I would like to know more about that.
I did hear that ask, so we'll get you. You want the breakdown of the, of the 16%? You want to know how much of it is being used in each of those, or what, what is programmed for each of those sections on the right? Is that the ask?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the, the history of the Community Corrections Center and population, and how much it's grown or shrunk, and over maybe 10 years. And then, um, just so we can see what's going on over there and understand it better. Um, and I've worked in that correction center. It's a great correction center, um, and I know a lot about how things operate. Um, and I know a lot of the really great strengths about it, and also some of the things that aren't as strong. So I just always like to have a lot of information, because it helps me better be supportive of levies such as this. Thank you.
And please know that we appreciate all of your questions and all of your perspectives, and even the pushback, because we need to be held to account on how we got here and what we plan to do in the future.
Yeah, I just think we're deeply concerned, and we've seen a change in our own community right now, and, um, to support this, I want to be able to answer questions from all the segments, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Counsel Ray.
Yeah, I agree with the, uh, councilors, my fellow councilors, because I see that 16%, it makes me think, you're only investing 60% out of 80, you know, like, into these programs. And then if you're asking us to support at $6 per month, or $21 per month, this levy for five years, there's got to be some more explanation than, oh, 60% goes to a list of these pro- but like, what is the percentage? Or like, why shouldn't I just give it to a local program here, nonprofit, that needs the $6 a month, that are doing prevention, domestic violence, uh, uh, support, that are sheltering, that are, you know, s- educating? So there, tho- those are the conversations that I think I have, I have that with my family, but I'm thinking people's like, why should I give, uh, or 6, $20 a month, or 300, $230 a year to the county as a levy, and it's, the problem's still there? There's no change. It's not even invested in my community, because the majority of the money is like in Hillsborough, or for some other part of the county, not so much here in Tuolton. So, I mean, these are things that I feel like they were unclear when I was, when I'm looking at that. It's like, you're putting us together with the entire county, but, you know, I feel like I need to know why shouldn't I, why should I give you the money, government, and not give it to a nonprofit that is actually helping here, my community?
I would argue you should probably be-
So those are things that-
Advocating for both. Um, the, the public safety system, though, really is a system, and, uh, the, you know, coming from a local city near Tuolton, in my background, um, all of the cities in the county are more reliant on the public safety resources that are provided for in this levy than you may realize. Um, and particularly around, uh, the jail, community corrections, and the district attorney's office, and then the specialty services that the sheriff's office provides. Um, many of the cities may provide one or two members of, for example, the, the, some of the specialty teams, sometimes none, um, but the cities all benefit from those things when you need, when you have a, uh, very specialized need in your city. That's who you call.
And this is, this is likely common knowledge, but I'll just say, uh, wherever you live in the county, we serve you, and an example of that is, uh, Chief Pickering is exceptional chief over an incredibly professional police department, but they do not have enough resources to have a SWAT team, for instance. And so, instead of that, we have an interagency tactical team that they will provide resources to Sherwood, Tigard, Beaverton, Hillsborough, and the sheriff's office. And while we are the, we provide most of the leadership and resources for it, all of the cities combine, and they all go wherever the greatest need is. And so during a critical incident in the city, they're going to be right there. Um, and we have a lot of interagency teams that work like that. It's just an example of, um, just to let you know that we are committed to the city of Tuolton.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you. No, I like the, I just, wh- those are questions of people out there in the-
Yeah.
Who are listening to us.
Yes, you have to, you have to ask them, and I appreciate it, because it gives me an opportunity to, you know, share some information that might not be widely known.
I'll make a confession. This is the first city council we've spoken to about the levy. So you're getting our, this is our first run-through.
Yeah, so trust me.
Sheriff and I were like, do you want to go first? Do you want, is, is Commissioner Snyder going to talk, or just answer questions? So, um, this is our-
So now I understand the assignment and what to go do better with.
Well, you're helping us out, because when we go meet with Tigard, we're going to have it dialed in, for sure.
Really?
Well, you know.
Other questions, comments? Uh, I only, I have two. Uh, one is, I have the same feelings, similar to Council President Pratt, about the county's budget condition. Um, I was very concerned with about of, you know, the sheriff had vacant positions eliminated, then had additional positions taken away, both sheriff, sworn sheriffs, and technical folks. Um, I know there was just, there was a change to DA's Barton's office, where a bunch of people got transferred from the county to the state. Um, so I'd hate to do two steps forward, get the levy, you know, approved, everybody's like, oh, okay, you know, the, the jail be fully staffed, all three pods are going, chugging away, and then next year, Sheriff Massey takes another $4 million hit. Um, so that's, that's my concern. Uh, I know you can't predict the future as far as tax revenue coming in, uh, but it's going to be similar to the library levy, where, uh, what's looming over the accountant in our group is, you know, the fiscal condition of the county, and approving these levies, but then in a year or two, um, Kevin and Caprice are in the same boat they're in now. I mean, they both know I'm fully supportive of public safety here, have always been. Commissioner Snyder, I know as a mayor he was, he is now. It's just that budget condition looming over our heads is what's, is hurting us. And, you know, telling the public that, you know, supporting this levy, and then, you know, the jails can be fully staffed, three pods open, the DA's office has what he, mostly what he needs. You know, I know you're still fighting that fight, uh, to get where they want to be. So that's why we look forward to working with you folks over the coming few weeks, uh, to get that message out and get people supportive of it, and just, uh, those folks who are, you know, t- super geeks in the county's budget condition can be rest assured that, you know, the jail's running fine, the sheriff is doing fine, and I'm corporate in Washington County, the tactical teams are there, and the DA has the resources he needs, um, to prosecute those crimes that need to be prosecuted. So that was, that's my ask. My second one is the much easier question. Is a certain person still going to the FBI camera, and when?
Oh.
He's standing back there.
He, uh, he, uh, John Cook is going, and he will be leaving right around the 25th, I think, of September.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so John's going, all right.
He's going.
All right.
I'm kicking him out.
Yeah, but I know there's a deal part of that.
There sure is. He has to come back.
Yes. Well, congratulations to John. All right. Thank you, the three of you.
Thank you so much.
Have a good evening. So we probably scared Lisa and Commissioner Treese. Welcome, Lisa, Commissioner Treese. This is Lisa Tattersall from Washington County.
Good evening. I'm Pam Treese, Commissioner for Washington County and District Two. And before, I do want to, I do want to give you just a little bit of background here. Uh, there are, we have the two levies, and, uh, four of the commissioners split up the two levies. So Commissioner Willie and I have been working on the library levy, and Commissioner Phi and Commissioner Snyder have been working on the public safety levy. So that's, that's why you're seeing who you're seeing tonight. So I just wanted to make that clear. And yes, this is our first time.
Lisa, you got a preview. Aren't you glad it called you second?
Maybe.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilors. Um, my name's Lisa Tattersall. I'm with Washington County Cooperative Library Services, here to share educational information about a proposed local option levy for libraries, Measure 34, 345. I should add that as a public employee, unlike the, um, three folks that were here before, um, I am subject to political restrictions under Oregon law, so I am sharing neutral and non-advocacy information only. Commissioner Treese can say whatever she wants. Um, and I hope I got this right, yeah. So in this presentation, I'll be covering how public library service is delivered in the county and the current funding. I'll also talk about what the proposed levy would fund, how much it would cost, and what would happen if the levy did not pass. Here in Washington County, library service is provided through a partnership between WCCLS and nine cities and three nonprofit associations, all that, um, that all operate local libraries. WCCLS is the primary source of funding for local libraries and also provides central support services that efficiently link these independently operated libraries together, creating a countywide system that is available to about 600,000 people. There are 16 full-service locations in the county, from banks in the northwest corner of the county, all the way down to Tuolton and Sherwood here in the south. In addition, our digital library is available 24/7 at wccls.org. In fiscal year 2425, the local option repres- the local option levy represents 45% of WCCLS revenue. The remaining 55% is a transfer from the county's general fund. The majority of WCCLS, uh, total funding is directed towards library funding allocations at 67%. The remaining 33% of WCCLS expense- The remaining 33% of WCCLS expenses are for the, uh, central services that link libraries The levy would fund programs, resources, and materials that are designed to support student success with reading and learning. Some of the events and resources available to kids and teens include book clubs, Oregon Battle of the Books or OBAP events, Makerspaces, STEAM programs. Libraries also, also offer resources for parents and caregivers, kindergarten readiness, test prep tools, and free access to fast and reliable internet. Over 10,000 students participated in library programs designed to support reading, learning, and student success last year. WCCLS has issued over 83,000 library cards to public school students since 2019. The levy would also fund the central services that efficiently link libraries together. Library users can use the shared online catalog to access over 1.5 million library items, reserving them for pickup at any of the 16 locations across the system. Uh, WCCLS courier trucks delivered 2.5 million books and other items to libraries in fiscal year 2324. In addition, WCCLS provides online learning tools such as job hunting resources, downloadable ebooks and audiobooks, digital newspapers and magazines, as well as streaming video, all available 24/7 to library users. The levy would fund us, open hours at 16 full-service public library locations across the county. Most libraries in the system are open at least six days a week and provide access to 1.5 million items in the shared collection. Last year, there were over 2.4 million visits to WCCLS libraries, and total checkouts exceeded 7.2 million. By borrowing items rather than purchasing them, library users saved $140 million last year. In addition to providing books and other materials, library buildings serve as cooling spaces for the community or warming spaces, um, in the wintertime. Users do not need a library card to access public computers and wifi, um, study rooms and meeting rooms. The levy would also fund children's reading events, including storytimes, um, some of which are offered in multiple language, including Spanish and Chinese. All WCCLS libraries offer regular events and programs for kids, as well as an annual summer reading program. Many libraries also offer, uh, interactive play areas that promote learning and social interaction. In fiscal year 2324, WCCLS libraries hosted over 200,000 participants at 6,000 in-person events for kids and teens. Okay, so if passed, Measure 34-345 would replace a 22-cent levy that is expiring in June of 2026. The proposed replacement levy would be a fixed rate of 37 cents per $1,000 of assessed value, and that levy would run from July 2026 to June 2031. In 2026, typical homeowners with an assessed value, that's not market value, of $348,600 would pay an estimated total of $129 annually, or $10.75 per month. If you look at it as an annual increase over the current levy rate, um, for the typical owner, um, the, uh, annual increase would be $54 per year, or $4.55 per month, more than the current levy. If the levy did not pass, reductions in library services would occur. These reductions would include reduced open hours, fewer book purchases, less reading events, and a reduced level of services that link libraries together. Some of these services that would be reduced include, um, fewer ebooks, uh, less robust online catalog, less frequent deliveries between libraries, and disrupted access to technology. Thank you, and we have more information on our website at wccls.org/levy.
I'm, I'm here for questions, but I do want to, before, before we get to that, I couldn't agree with you more, Mayor, and by the way, thank you for, Mayor and all of the council for having us here tonight, I appreciate it. And I think it's really important to have the time where electeds can talk to electeds, that's, that's really key to me. You're right about our budget. You are, you are right about the fragility of that budget, and where, we're, that's not gonna go away. We are looking closely at what our revenue options are. Commissioner Snyder alluded to that. That is gonna be staffed and with electeds working as well. So, we are trying to solve this problem, but I'm not gonna pretend that it won't be a problem moving forward. I would say that it's my goal to make sure that we are engaging our cities in the process when we are budgeting, so, so that we can, we can look to where we can help one another through this process. Because you all live in the county too, and you, I recognize that you are as interested in having a healthy county as you are in having a healthy city. We, we can't, neither one can exist without the other. And so, I am committed to looking into the future and how we can work more closely to solve these problems. But, you're right, it is, it is an issue, and our general fund is, is suffering, but, and we do have to look at new revenue options. So, questions?
Questions for the Commissioner or Lisa? Council Brooks, and then Councilor Hillier, Council President Hillier. I have, uh, Hillier, you got promoted. Council President Pratt.
I'm having trouble.
Thank you for the presentation, and, um, for all the, the detailed information, it's very helpful. Uh, one thing that I don't wanna lose in the conversation, especially just, we were talking about that public safety, part of public safety in my mind is this library in our community. While we face, while we're sitting here in a 100-degree day, um, and face these extreme heat days, we are also discussing the benefits, um, the costs and benefits of eviction prevention versus having people live in their cars for six to eight months, on average, when they're evicted, um, and in parking lots, instead of homes. And so, you know, the, the, the place that we have our cooling center is our library, and as these conditions become more concerning, um, we're going to be facing, um, reductions in services. So, this is part of our web too, and I just want, um, you to think about that when we're moving through. And I also wanna mention that, um, like, the presentation, the details, we have professional, um, librarians with expertise that we very, very much value, that's not the same as somebody that knows how to read books. So, um, preserving, um, our expertise and our professionalism while we, uh, surf very turbulent times that are coming, is something that, um, I don't wanna lose, uh, prioritization of. And so those are my big concerns in this moment, especially as we're facing, um, deep reductions in healthcare, social services, and the rest, which affects people's basic needs.
Thank you, Councilor Brooks, and I, I will, I will tell you that I'm co-chair of our advisory council on racial equity. And we had one of our meetings, Lisa came and did a presentation on a survey that went out to different communities. One member of that group got a little, little sideways, I think might be fair to say, and because her comment was, "I know that you did not reach into my, the people that I represent. These individuals are, uh, living on the edge, and, and I don't believe that they were represented in your survey." And the next words out of her mouth was, "For the people that I work with, the libraries are more trusted than the food bank."
That's right.
And I, frankly, that statement has stuck with me for a very long time. And, and I, and I use that comment, because it, to your point, our library, when people are in need, they go to the library. They go to the library for resources. They may be asking, "Where do I go for food? Where do I go for help with my child? May I use, where, where is the computer that I can use? Where can I get cool? Where can I get warm?" So you're absolutely right, right. The library is part of our safety net in this community. I am an avid user of Libby. I love Libby, and I love the, the, the opportunity to, to read as much as I want to, and that's, that's one level of use. But it's really important that all of us as electeds remember what that, what that entire web looks like. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I just also wanna remind people too, that as these stressors increase, it's harder for kids to learn, so the supplemental, um, learning and, um, hands-on opportunities that we have at the libraries currently are so fundamental, and also language, citizenship, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, are so fundamental to our community, especially with Hillsborough being so far away. So, I appreciate you coming tonight, and I appreciate that we, that we looked, re-looked at this budget after, um, Commissioner Snyder came as well, and put in, um, better numbers that we can deal with, and not taking losses as a community, which is very important to us, thank you.
I will pass that, I will pass that along to Commissioner Willie, because I'm afraid we, we were probably the biggest pests to, to Lisa in this process. Thank you.
Yeah, I totally understand. Thank you, Pam.
Council President Pratt.
Alrighty. So, this is really a nitpicky one, but is, is the levy going from 22 cents a thousand to 47?
37.
Oh, 37, that's why I have the wrong number here.
What do you do like this?
Thank you. That makes sense, huh? I'm not so nitpicky. Okay, so Commissioner Treese, I have to ask this question that I, I should have-
Please, please.
-a year ago. Okay, so, this li, the library, and I'll, I'll stay on transportation tonight, but this was a serial levy back in the 70s, it went into your general fund, I think with ballot measure 50, and you guys have always honored that money that these voters voted for going to the libraries.
No, we're, we're talking about the libraries, not misstep, right?
Yes, yes, libraries, so stay in the libraries tonight.
Don't keep it going on that.
Don't, yeah, you can, you can get the two of us to transportation, it's gonna be a real long night. But, anyway, I'm talking about the library levy from, I think, 76-
Okay.
-that ended up in the general fund, and you guys have always honored that and given the money to WCCLS, and now this year, you pulled out that $3.9 million of that money, and I'm just wondering, this one bothers me, just 'cause I feel like it's money people specifically voted for, for a specific purpose, so I'm just trying to understand why you did that at the county level.
And, and I think we, Lisa could probably give us the exact numbers, but, and I'm, I'm maybe shooting myself in the foot, but you will always get honesty from me, and that is, this is not the first year.
Okay.
So, just, just saying.
Okay, so why was it done then?
Thank you for the bye, but I'm gonna say, no, it wasn't, it wasn't the, the first year. And the, the issue is not frankly dissimilar to misstep, and that-
Right.
-and it is, it is in the same, I, it is, I would put it into the same category of commitment in the, I believe it was the 90s, when Measure 5 and Measure 50 came forward. And what we have not been able to do is to balance our budget without looking at reductions across the board. And Council President, yes, it's, it's, it's dramatic, and yes, it's, um, it was a commitment that we made back then, but I will also say, that commitment was a very, such a different time too. We didn't have 7, 8% inflation rates, we didn't have, we, none of us were facing the budget issues that we face today. So, it's, it's my belief that we should be looking at, well, I believe that we should be looking at tax reform across, across the universe of tax here, and I don't think anybody here would disagree with that. So, and to, and while I respect, and frankly, frankly, in my very first race, I campaigned on keeping those promises. And it wasn't until I got into the job six years later, five years later, that I realized that those promises were for that time. And it's hard to keep those same promises in those same ratios in today's world. So I'm not, I'm, I am, I understand what you're saying, and I agree with you, but I would say that we need, we need a new system as we move forward, and that's true for all of us.
Okay, and now I'll go into another tough question, and I'll leave you alone.
Please.
Okay. Um, our, our library, like, Councilbook alluded to, we, we don't have a community service center, we don't have a lot of social services, hint, hint, in East Washington County, and, so our library serves a lot more purposes-
It's a living room.
-than, than maybe Beaverton's library does, or Hillsborough, so, um, and we have a lot of people that use it here 'cause of the hours. So now with this new allocation, um, you know, we don't, we don't know what the end result will be, but we, we've heard that we might have limited service hours, and that, um, some of the autonomy of the book selection is possibly gonna be taken away, so that takes away our uniqueness. So, we're actually getting possibly less service, but we're asking people to pay more money, so, and I fully support this, I'll just let you know in advance, but I wanna know what, what we-
How do we say this?
How do we tell people that it's worth the extra money when they, it appears we might be getting less?
So, um, there were a couple questions in there, a couple comments in there, and I think that, uh, the, the first one might have been related to the new allocation process, and by the way, Commissioner Willie and myself, we have been involved with the team through this process as well, so I, I, it's so complex, I think I understand most of it, but there is, there has been a, a pretty dramatic change, and Lisa, please correct me if I'm not, not right here, when we, previously, when we looked at usage patterns for the library, we looked at our circulation rates. Well, circulation rates, because things, so much has changed in the library world, I mentioned earlier, using Libby, you know, it's, it's, it's a whole, it's a whole different world. That was not a, a really appropriate indicator for usage patterns. So we're trying something new as, as a result, we're looking at our geographic service population. It may not work out either, frankly, and I'm, I'm, this is what we're, we're hoping that it does, but I think it's incumbent upon the county, I think it's incumbent upon our WCCLS to make sure we're watching those pieces, to make sure it is reflective, and the allocation process as a result is also, is also in the correct, uh, framework. As far as the collections and moving collections from decentralized to centralized, what we'll end up doing is saving about $4 million a year, that, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
I can add more flavor in it.
And, and I understand the concern about losing the autonomy and losing that piece, but I think that if we can work, we are cooperative library service. We are, we, from the very get-go, we are designed to work together to meet everybody's needs. Uh, and I think that the collection process is gonna have to be informed by all of our local libraries to be successful, and to get the services to the people that you serve in your community.
So, and the only thing I would add is that, um, thank you, and, and I think is that we're working with all of the library directors across the system to, um, develop the process for what the centralization looks like, and so, starting, uh, next month, in September, we'll be working, um, with all of the library directors on the RFP to bring in the consulting firm, um, and guide the staff engagement process and the technical advice, um, as we build the new centralized system. Um, so it's really important that we do it together, and I think one of the cool things about our system is that each library has their own strength that they've cultivated over the years. Um, and as you've talked about, you know, not everyone always travels all over the county to access all of the different services, and so, one of the interesting opportunities with this is that if one library has really cultivated a particular specialty, that is something that we can learn from, and then hopefully replicate across the system, and so we hope to, like, share our strengths across the system to benefit more folks. The allocation amount for Tuolton for all the libraries would be increased, um, yet your cost to deliver service would go down, because your cost to provide centralization, uh, collections would be something that the county would take on, and so, um, there is a net, uh, benefit in, in the ability to, um, direct resources to other local priorities.
Uh, I, I've just gotta follow up with one last question, sorry, but, um, so, the people in Tuolton will end up paying more if this levy passes, so what will they get in return at our library? at our library? Will we get more, or are we getting less?
First of all, we're surviving.
Well, yes.
And I'm sorry, you know, I'm gonna be honest, I, I'm just, I hate to say it like that, but that's really true. And, but at the same time, they will be getting more. We're gonna ensure our basic services. We've got other components that are the growth aspect. But this is, this is, we're facing new issues now. And I'm just gonna be straight. I know that. I make, I make that face, too. So. Would you like to add to that?
No library will be getting less revenue.
Yeah.
And every library will be seeing an increase.
But we're looking, this is a five-year levy, too. So, we're looking to what the future will hold, and that's really important as well. So, I think that that's something that we have to hold on to. And I'm sorry, Counselor Hillier, for, she made a face over here and I had to agree.
Okay. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you for your questions.
Counsel Reyes and Counselor Gonzalez.
You say, you say you're facing, I'm sorry, I just, sometimes when they say, "We're facing different issues," what are those different issues?
Well, I, I don't think that they're, you mean, different issues from?
Yeah, you just mentioned right now, a couple seconds ago, that we're facing different issues.
We're facing increased costs. That's what I, that's what I meant to say. It's different, and what we, whether there are labor costs.
So, cost is an issue, labor. Like, I guess elaborate a little bit on what are those issues?
I can speak to the increasing demand of services.
Thank you.
So, I think that, yeah, like, the costs in general are increased, as you all are well aware. Costs for everything are, are more, but I think the complexity of the needs that our libraries are serving have increased as well. And I'm sure you, you were talking earlier about, you know, libraries are acting as cooling centers, your library has a wonderful maker space, you know, all of our libraries are acting to fill in a lot of the gaps for other social services that don't exist. And we're also, at the same time, still doing storytime and providing books and doing all of those traditional services. We're also helping people navigate all of the new technology that comes out, which, but we're, it feels like we're never letting any old services go. Do you know what I mean? So, as our world gets more complicated and the challenges that we're dealing with as a society continue to evolve and get more complex, we're not really dropping any of our core services. We just continue to look at, how else can we help serve the community? Also, we've had community growth as well, just the population has grown. So, I think just the complexity of services that library are, are providing and the challenges continue to.
You know, one, one interesting example of that to me is, is the use of electronic books and how people might read on their Kindle, or you, you, you borrow a library book and it can go to your Kindle and you can use it there. That cost of borrowing the book, what is the differential between, it's, it's unbelievable. It's like.
We budget about $4 million for our ebook collection centrally, which is more than all of the library's combined spend on their print books. And so, you think, like, we're still buying print books, people still want those, and people all still want digital content, so we're basically doubled our collection, you know, how much we're providing and how much we're spending. And so, one print book, don't quote me on this because it's a little rusty, but it's something like, you know, $15 or something like that. A digital book can cost anywhere from $60 to $80 to, like, almost $200 per copy.
Isn't that, that, and it's counterintuitive. I would, I, I, before I came into this, I would have thought it was less expensive, but the contracts to provide those books are very high. So, so there is, there's a key example of differences.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Gonzalez.
In your presentation, you had listed, I'm just curious, what do you think the average home value is in Tualton? Just curious, what do you think?
Well, we have the assessed value.
Yeah.
Do you know?
I, I'm just curious.
Yeah. I thought this might be a trick question.
It kinda is a little bit, because the sample that you use in this presentation, though, I'm, I'm in support of this levy, but I know, we wanna get it to the finish line with some...
Sure.
But you list a, a value assessed of $348,000, which is, which is not anywhere near to present 129 per year value, which is, makes it sound like it's a lower cost. But our average houses in Tualton, they're almost 600,000, you know, thereabouts. Let's just go 500, but they're, this is a really low example that you're using, you know, to, to make it sound lower.
It's assessed, but it's, that's what.
It's based on the R and B value?
Yes.
Yeah. And the, the other question I have for you is, what steps will you, will be taken to make sure that the funds aren't diverted to unrelated projects?
By law, like, if the levy funds, we have to spend them on what's in the ballot title.
Yeah, the ballot title is king.
All right, thank you.
And, and that, that's in any situation.
You know, we're facing property taxes, the Tualton Valley fire that happened, school bond, the library levy, the public safety levy, and then it's just, it's coming up everywhere.
I, I agree.
Yeah. Thank you.
Counselor Hillier.
Just one last thing. I know my daughter, who lives in Washington DC, goes to school, appreciates the Libby books, so I'll tell her how much value she's getting. But I, I will share with you what our funders have said to us from the federal government right now. You need to start doing bake sales. So, if that's of any help, I don't know, it was really helpful for me, so I'm sure it's equally helpful for you.
How's your brownie recipe?
Yeah, damn good.
Counselor Sacco.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I would love just a little bit more information about the centralized collection, and I understand how it's going to save money. However, I'm just concerned about, when we say that we're not gonna have reduced services, it does seem like that, that this point is taking away some of the, maybe the accessibility to certain resources that our, that our unique community member makeup has today, because our librarians understand what our community needs are and the folks coming in there asking for certain books. I'm sure you heard, this isn't the first time you're hearing any of this. So, can you just talk a little bit about exactly how that's all gonna work? I just really don't fully understand that and how we can make sure that we're still supporting our community members' needs.
Absolutely. It's a great question, and it's, I think, the number one question that folks are asking across the system. I think that, and I don't have all of the immediate answers to say it's gonna be this, this, and this, because we need to co-create that with our library staff partners as we work on the process. So, I think it is really, this is like a standard operating procedure for any sort of standard county library system of our size. So, the model we're moving to is definitely not really radical or cutting edge or anything. It's, it's a pretty normal practice. I think we're a little unusual in that we've persisted in this model for this long. And so, there's a lot of models we can look at in terms of how a larger system will make sure they get that unique input from each building, because we need that, because the library, there's like 500 library staff across the county that work in these 16 buildings. They are the main interface with our community, and it is so critical that we have ways to hear from them about what they need. I just haven't, like, thinking about when I used to be a reference librarian, like, a long time ago, back in the day, and I had, the example I always think of is I had a veteran come in and he said to me, "Every time I come in, you don't have any PTSD books on the shelf." And, and he said, "I just, I can't wait, like, I just need one, but I come in," and that, always, that, that, I'll never forget that moment, and I just picked up the phone and I called the person who orders those books, and I was like, "You need to order some freaking PTSD books. We need a lot of copies of this." And so, it's just, that, I don't know, that, that's just an example of, like, it's really important that, that staff at the library have the ability to let us know what they need, because we know that, like, A, it feels really bad to not be able to offer your community what they want, and B, that's how we are sure we do a good job, is if we hear from the staff. So, but we'll, we'll develop those systems, and we're happy to come back and share more information along the way if that's helpful, too.
And, and I think through the, through the librarians and our communities, it's an iterative process. We're gonna have to work to get good at it, but I think that it, I have faith that it will work.
Any other questions or comments? Counsel Brooks.
I appreciate the conversation around the reframing of the counts, and I'm just curious, kind of, you know, we're, are libraries close to the freeway, is, has a lot of different things? So, if you're counting from the population of the city, are you counting from the users that go in and out of the library? Are you counting from the books that are taken out? That's not what, that's what it was, and now it's just a general count?
Correct me if I'm wrong here, but it's an estimate of a 10-minute radius from the library and what that's, I know, what that service population would look like.
It would be your entire city's population is assigned to your library, plus then it would look at who uses the library around you, and then each of those precincts are, I'm happy to come back and provide if that would be helpful, some more information, because it would be that, yeah, it's your, your base is your, your city's population, and then we looked at library usage and then assigned precincts based on that. So, if it was outside of your city, like in unincorporated areas, those would get assigned to you based on library usage. If there was a conflict where it looked like people would go either way, then we looked at the travel time. But, again, I'm happy to come back.
And I'm also curious why it wasn't stepped in with the loans, instead of having it 100% changing from one measurement to another, to have it stepping into a new system to make sure that it's correlating properly with the actual materials landed and, because we have over our population just coming into the city of Tualton to work.
I...
30,000 people.
One of the things that I've asked for, and we're, we're in a really early stages of seeing how, how this will play out, but what I've asked for is there, is there a way to continue to watch what our circulation rates were while we look at this new allocation process, so that we can balance and see where, where the disparities are and adjust as we move forward? It seems to me that we'll, again, this is a, this is a big change.
Yeah.
And I believe strongly that we're gonna have to keep our eyes on it closely and make sure that the allocation process holds up to scrutiny.
Yeah, I just, for me, especially with the increases in technology and data collecting, that to just move so quickly from one to the other doesn't make a lot of sense to me, when I think that we're gonna be able to have a richer way of counting in about five minutes.
Wow, I know. I agree with you.
And we did look at usage, and I think that's, it, it's a, it's something that we'll keep an eye on, absolutely.
Yeah. And then, I guess, I guess my other question, too, is just around getting more information about the numbers, like when you said, like, the four million, or what was it, four million?
You mean for, on savings, on collection?
On the savings, yes, to have a breakdown of what that means.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're saving the best for last, I think.
Well, they've, they've asked the tough questions. I'm actually gonna do the, the nice thing here, and thank you and Commissioner Snyder and your fellow commissioners for listening to us. Commissioner Snyder, last time he was here, he got beat up hard about the funding mechanism, and you guys listened and changed the funding mechanism. So, we're, in my mind, 99% of the way. There's still a few things that, you know, certain three cities are concerned about, but tremendous stride was made, so I wanna thank you very much for that. You know, it was one of those right things where you get a nice thank you, pat on the back.
Thank you. Well, I think that, I think we were trying to listen and staff was trying to listen, and it took several runs at getting the information and getting it into our brains and, and working together. So, but I do believe that we can do this into the future together as well.
And then, the other thank you is to Sherilyn and Jerianne. Sherilyn and Jerianne have been representing Tualton at these meetings and advocating fiercely, listening to the city council, listening to residents, and passing on our feelings and advocating tremendously for us, so I just wanna thank both of you for that. They've been our funnel of information, and I very much appreciate all the updates you've given us over the last few weeks. I'm not gonna be, they covered all the things I had in my mind, just wanted, again, thank you for listening. I'm looking forward to, I think, the next funding meeting is August 19th, okay? Because that's a critical part in my mind and whether, you know, we're full, you know, on board, let's go do this, and also wanna know, you know, how we're gonna get that message out, as Counselor Gonzalez, other, other counselors mentioned, how to get the message out that we fully support and that we can all rally behind, so I'm looking forward to that in the coming weeks.
Great. Thank you for your time tonight, and thank you for your questions. Thank you for pushing, because we all get better when we, when we all push. So, it, it is appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, so that brings us to public hearings. I'm just gonna do a potty check, if you will. Do people wanna pile through? Do you want to take a five-minute break? Keep going?
Yeah.
All right. All right, that brings us to a public hearing. Sure, just wanna make sure. Ordinance 1451-25, adopting the 2045 Tual, Transportation System Plan. This is a public hearing for the, I was gonna slow down here. This is a public hearing for the city council to consider ordinance number 1451-25, adopting the 2045 Transportation System Plan and related amendments to the Tualton Comprehensive Plan and Development Code. This is a public hearing, so I have, I'm reading as the rules of the game here. First, the public hearing will be opened by city staff, and they will make a presentation. Next, the council will hear from members in the public who wish to testify in favor of the ordinance, followed by members in the public who wish to testify against the ordinance, followed by anyone else who would like, who would wish to testify. Upon conclusion of the public testimony, individual counselors may ask questions of city staff and any person who provided testimony. After council questions, the council will close the public portion meeting, public portion of the hearing to consider the resolution. Upon conclusion of deliberations, the council will consider whether or not to adopt resolution number five, no, it's an ordinance, isn't it a resolution?
It's a resolution.
Yeah, because, okay, the lingo here is a little messed up. It got, consider the ordinance number 1451-25. Does any member of the city council wish abstaining for participating in this hearing? All right. I'll now go ahead and open this public hearing on ordinance number 1451-25, and I invite Erin and Mike already up there to start the city staff presentation. Welcome. Thank you for being patient.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and counselors. As you mentioned, this is a legislative public hearing to consider adoption of the 2045 Transportation System Plan and supporting amendments to the Comprehensive Plan and Development Code. Our technical expert is here tonight from Fair and Peers. I just wanna give a huge thank you to Brianna Calhoun for leading this effort. I'm also joined, like you said, by Mike McCarthy, our city engineer.
And looking at the time, I will minimize my part of the presentation, so go for it, but we are more than willing to answer any questions you or anyone else might have.
So, to set the stage, I wanted to share an introductory statement from our TSP, which is, "By 2045, Tualton will have a modern, inclusive transportation system designed to make life easier and more enjoyable for everyone. Initiated in 2024, the TSP is a roadmap for creating a walkable, healthy, and sustainable city. It ensures that as Tualton grows, the city's transportation options will remain accessible, safe, and connected for all users." So, the first part of tonight's agenda serves as a summary of the TSP process. That will be followed by an overview of the supporting amendments and the legislative approval criteria for the TSP adoption. We will then review public comments submitted for the TSP update, and we will close with the planning commission recommendation and council's consideration of ordinance 1451-25. A transportation system plan brings together community members, staff, and council to establish a shared understanding of how the transportation system operates today, identifies needed improvements, and creates a vision for enhancing community mobility. It also provides a realistic understanding of what projects can be implemented and funded over the next 20 years. Tualton's current TSP was last updated, oh, was drafted in 2012, excuse me, was adopted in 2012, then later updated in 2014, and had some small minor updates in 2019 and 2021. A key theme of the 2045 TSP is recognizing that our streets host more than just cars, which means completely... which means completing the system for everyone. The 2045 TSP includes an update to our previous transportation goals and policies in the comprehensive plan to reflect new statewide legislation to address carbon emissions from transportation, as well as our changing community priorities. Largely, these goals were identified by input from the Community Advisory Committee, also known as our CAC, City Council, and the public outreach efforts. They also tie in seamlessly with council's 2030 vision for an efficient, accessible, innovative, sustainable, and connected transportation system that effectively and safely meets the needs of our entire community. As such, these goals were used to develop a project prioritization framework for the types of investments that this plan recommends over the 20-year horizon. The city conducted extensive public engagement for the TSP, which was broken down into the four phases that you see here. The state also expanded TSP requirements in 2022 to incorporate equity into the engagement process, and this was achieved through focus group sessions with Spanish-speaking and BIOPAC communities. Through this process, we heard that residents value a balanced transportation system that supports multiple modes of transportation. Community members showed strong enthusiasm for active transportation options like walking and biking, while also prioritizing driving as an option. Additional concerns were voiced regarding increased traffic congestion. These community perspectives were used to shape the TSP goals and project recommendations. As you can see on this slide, there were numerous events held throughout the city. It's not surprising that the large city events like Viva Tuolton and Pumpkin Regatta garnered the most participants. And we also engaged the community virtually through an online survey. At this point, I wish to recognize our dedicated Community Advisory Committee that consisted of 13 community members and two councillors. This group met five times to review and provide feedback on the development of the TSP. They were instrumental in providing local context to the transportation goals that we just discussed, and they also helped to identify key destinations, critical gaps in our transportation system, and potential projects. Tonight, we are joined by two of those members and the two from our council. So thank you for being a part of this project and for your contributions. I don't know if anybody would like to get up and speak on behalf of the CAC. You're welcome to do so. I know it's getting late.
Come on, Nancy. Well, I've got certificates for you, so does that, like, motivate you to say something, Nancy?
I would say something. I was going to say during the public hearing, but.
We'll say that part too, but about the committee though. You got to come up with a mic. Surprise? Just talk about the committee part, not the ordinance itself. Whatever you want.
Okay.
What was it like being on the committee?
Why, did I want to be on the committee?
Why did you want to be on it, and how was it?
Because I am a very passionate transportation engineer, and I love my city, and I feel, felt like I had something to offer in getting, making it better to get around in the city. And I'm an avid walker, I'm an avid cyclist, I also drive a car, and sometimes I ride a bus, not very often. So I will say that the committee members were pretty diverse. We had, you know, as, as well as we could do, I think. And the staff and the consultant were really great in engaging the committee. We had some really good meetings and activities, and what we said was heard, and the committee went, great, it was great. Thank you. Is that enough?
That was great.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm gonna, so Nancy, on behalf of the city, to Tuolton, I want to present you the certificate of appreciation. And then, like, I've got a whole bunch here, let's see.
We also have Justin Lindley here tonight.
Justin?
Yes.
You want to say anything, or just take your certificate?
I will just add, she did a phenomenal job at talking about everything. And I would just add that the, the staff and the consultants did a fantastic job with that throughout the entire process. It was one of the better committees that I've been on. And then on the other side of it, she's the engineer, I do planning, and so I thought the consultant was really great, so good pick on that one. And the work the staff did again, phenomenal job.
Well, thank you for spending time over a year participating in the process.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
Thank you.
That's amazing.
I need to get a little special. Or the mayor, I should say.
Well, in the background of this pose, you actually are almost the same height. Cool, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, you said you wanted to say something?
Yeah, just really quick, I was on that 2012, I can't believe it's that long, go committee. Anyway, I have to say, this was so well-run by the consultants, the staff, and, and you're right, we have a super diverse group of people there, and I, every, every meeting, everybody was so engaged and, you know, really cared about our community. So just thank you to everybody.
All right, and as mentioned, we did have two city councillors who represented council on the committee, so I want to give you your certificate also here, Council President Pratt.
Can we get a picture with you?
And Counselor Gonzalez, thank you.
And I will say, it was just a wonderful group to work with, and I want to thank each person for donating their time and their expertise to help us with this. So thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Reyes as an alternate. Thank you, everyone.
All right, switching gears back to the planning context. A TSP is required for all cities and counties in Oregon to ensure compliance with state rules and regulations. This is a requirement that is included under Oregon Planning Goal 12, which is implemented through the transportation planning rule in the Oregon Administrative Rules. On top of that, regional rulemaking and guidance found in the Oregon Transportation Plan, ODOT's TSP guidelines, and Metro's Transportation Plan also contribute to the TSP process. Locally, the TSP serves as the transportation component of our comprehensive plan and includes a thorough review of local plans and policies that shape land use and transportation in Tuolton. That would include things like the Climate Action Plan and the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Once the TSP is adopted, identified projects can be considered in the city's capital improvement plan for funding. On this slide, it's kind of a visual about how the TSP project list is created. Basically, preliminary work for the TSP included an inventory of our multimodal network to study gaps in the network and the level of service being provided by each transportation element. We then identified potential projects that were adopted under previous plans, were needed for safety, or addressed some of the community's desires. This generated a large list of identified projects that were filtered through a few different lenses to fulfill both state rules, local priorities, and funding constraints, which we'll walk through on the following slides. Largely, projects were prioritized based off of how well they address the TSP goals that we previously mentioned. The transportation planning rule also requires the prioritization of projects that reduce vehicle miles traveled and will benefit underserved populations. These projects were then further refined into a financially constrained project list. This was achieved by identifying available funding and project cost estimating. This resulted in a list of projects that can be reasonably funded during the planning horizon. The state sets that bar at 125% of projected revenues for transportation. The end goal is a list that is balanced to cover a range of transportation modes, geographic areas, and costs to take advantage of these funding opportunities. So in the end, we identified 113 projects. You'll see that a large percentage support active transportation projects. The TSP also identified transit projects to improve service reliability and amenities for the network, and complete street projects to address bottleneck and safety concerns. Do you want to add anything about our project list?
I think the complete street projects are the biggest ones that get to some of the bigger problems. The active transportation tended to be smaller ones, and the transit were things that we would be doing on a road system. This also includes an element of pushing for transit from other providers, like, say, TriMet.
And then we just highlight some elements here to the, the constraint list doesn't necessarily guarantee that a project will be built or funded, and they don't have to be built in a specific order. Outcomes of the project list have been vetted by the community, will result in a balanced multimodal system that meets the needs of all of our users, aligns with the city and state climate goals, and can be used to build the city's capital improvement plan and align with funding opportunities as they arise. It's kind of my summary slide. And then I just wanted to highlight an example of what that looks like using our pedestrian network. On the left-hand side, you see the existing inventory, which calls out gaps in purple, and then in orange, you see partial gaps where there are sidewalks on only one side. On the right, we evaluated level of stress that these, users of the system would feel. Let's see. The evaluation for level of stress included several factors, including pavement quality, the presence of obstructions in the walkway, whether a sidewalk is curbed tight or separated by a landscape strip, as well as taking into account traffic speeds and volumes on the adjacent roadway. So this provides a useful indicator of areas that likely will require additional investment. And based on this analysis, we found that many collector and arterial roadways in Tuolton provide a level of stress of three or four, which is fairly high, and that indicates that pedestrians might feel high levels of stress or discomfort along those routes. Anything to add? Okay. Through this evaluation, we found that our pedestrian network could be improved by filling the identified gaps and increasing the number of safe crossings along collectors and arterials, and also providing recreational walking paths to connect to regional trails throughout Now we'll switch gears to talk about the supporting amendments. Most amendments are minor in nature, however, we are proposing more extensive updates to Comprehensive Plan Chapter 8 and Development Code Chapter 74 and 75. Those serve as the transportation chapters in our Tuolton Development Code. To tease out a few examples, we talked about updating the transportation goals in our comprehensive plan. Those are to reflect the changing community values and statewide legislation. We are also updating some of our comprehensive plan maps related to transportation in accordance with the 2045 TSP. The most notable of these amendments is Map 8.1 to update the functional classification of our road network to better align with how the roadways are operating and how they have been functioning. And I'll show you that in a few slides. The ordinance also includes updates that are minor in nature. Using Chapter 31 as an example, we're clarifying some definitions related to transportation. And then some amendments will better organize our code, like relocating the application requirements for a driveway approach permit from our Public Improvement Chapter 74 to our Applications Chapter 33 for consistency throughout the Development Code. The amendments also expand our land use application requirements to include a street plan that will demonstrate how proposed development will reasonably connect to the adjacent transportation network. And then I also wanted to dive a little deeper into Chapters 74 and 75, since we did some work on those. Chapter 74 provides standards for public and private transportation facilities and utilities. It has been updated to establish street standards in compliance with the 2045 TSP and provides for an exceptions process to those standards. Street connectivity standards, maximum block length standards, and mid-block accessway standards have been incorporated to address state rulemaking for walkable communities under CFAC. We've added standards for private streets and alleys that can be applied to residential or mixed-use development, and requirements that apply to easements, utilities, or street trees have been clarified and streamlined. Then moving on to Chapter 75, that establishes standards for access management. Under the ordinance, driveway approach requirements have been reorganized, and access spacing standards have been added in compliance with the 2045 TSP. These standards will apply to new access points that connect to the public street network. We are also amending our cross-section design standards, and we'll preview those in the following slides. You wish to add anything?
Not at this point.
Okay. So, this is a preview of our Map 8.1, which I mentioned. It's our functional classification map, and it also includes our proposed traffic signal plan.
And so this includes some of the changes in response to some of the comments received, for example, changing Tuolton Road to an arterial and making Leavitton a collector. And then in a number of places where it says "traffic signal," what we're actually including in the project list is signal or roundabout, or in some places, intersection improvements, parentheses, such as a traffic signal or roundabout, to, with the understanding that when we start doing something there, we first take a look at what's the best form for the intersection.
Just, can you, for the folks that are still watching, define what a arterial and a, the different levels here, what's an arterial, what's a circulator? Just something, what, what, what are those? What's the difference between those kinds of streets?
Sure. So principal arterial is our biggest, busiest streets. That's like Tuolton Sherwood Road. I-5 is kind of off the scale on classification, but that's the highest level. An arterial is the next highest level, and that's roads like Boone's Ferry that carry a lot of traffic, really a lot of focus on moving traffic safely and efficiently, also providing good walking and cycling routes, but they prioritize moving traffic quite a bit more than accessing adjacent properties. And then collector is the next step down, so it's sort of in between arterial and local, and that really balances moving traffic with access to adjacent properties. And then local streets focus primarily on local access and not so much on moving traffic.
So what's an example of a collector?
Collector, let's see. So Leavitton, Iback, Avery East of Boone's Ferry, and like 50th and Nyberg Lane, Hazelbrook, 105th, Blake, 108, for example.
I just want, so people know what they meant. Thank you.
And then, new state rules require that roads be more equitably distributed amongst users, which is reflected in our updated cross-sections. These updated designs provide for slightly wider sidewalks, planter strips and bike lanes, and slightly narrower vehicular lanes. I don't know.
So the wider planter strips is in accordance with the Climate Action Plan of making sure planter strips are wide enough for trees to really actually grow in. The narrower travel lanes are designed to provide adequate width, but also kind of visually slow traffic. By making a road look a little smaller, people tend to drive it a little slower. And those do include flexibility to adjust, say, planter strip widths to avoid wetlands or mature trees, for example. And this includes a pretty big change in our local street section, and it's, actually provides three options for local streets. Our current standard is 32 feet wide with parking on both sides, and then five-foot planter strip, five-foot sidewalk. Most developers don't want to use that much space for road right-of-way, and also in newer developments, the driveways are so close together that there really isn't space to park cars. So then we're building these streets at 32 feet wide, but people can't park along them, but because they're really wide. But because they're really wide, people drive fast. So then we start getting more speeding complaints, and we're building more asphalt, which contrary to our global warming goals, and also a lot more impervious area for stormwater. So along with the 32-foot section, we have an option for 28 feet with parking on one side, or a 20-foot wide road with no parking, and then five-foot planter strip, five-foot sidewalk. And the developers we've been talking with really appreciate that kind of flexibility.
The 2045 TSP and supporting amendments comply with the legislative approval criteria provided in the statewide planning goals, Oregon administrative rules, including the transportation planning rule, the Oregon Highway Plan, Metro Code, and the Tuolton Development Code. Detailed findings are included in Exhibit 4 in the adoption packet. In addition to criteria listed on the previous slide, the findings demonstrate compliance with other relevant plans adopted by the city, including the Basalt Creek Concept Plan and the Parks Master Plan. We now wish to address some of the public comments that we received, and those have been included in your packet materials as Exhibit 5. One public comment expressed interest in maintaining local vehicular access in the Basalt Creek area. In response, staff notes that the city has a local street plan, which has been adopted under Comprehensive Plan Map 8.3. This plan illustrates minimum local street connectivity in the Basalt Creek area, as shown in the top right corner. And we are not proposing any updates to this map under the TSP amendments. This comment also expressed concerns over the location of trails in the Basalt Creek area. Staff notes that adopted Map 8.4, which serves as our bicycle and pedestrian plan, and Map 72-2, which serves as our greenway development plan, identify approximate locations of trails and pathways in the Basalt Creek area. This map is shown on the bottom right corner. Map 8.4 includes minor updates to facilities that were previously labeled as planned facilities, but have since been constructed and are now labeled as existing facilities in this update. There are no substantiative updates proposed to trails or pathways located in the Basalt Creek under this TSP amendment. Sorry, I just need to move down through my notes. There were also concerns regarding the specific policies and criteria used to evaluate the 2045 TSP. And as mentioned on the previous slide, this TSP was evaluated for conformance against all applicable state, regional, and local criteria. And we have presented those findings to you in Exhibit 4.
All right, so the project that had been a traffic signal at the intersection of Tuolton Road and 115th Avenue, that has been changed to an intersection improvement parentheses, such as a traffic signal or roundabout, to preserve that option. It also has been moved off of the financially constrained list, as discussed at the work session a few weeks ago, and onto the financially unconstrained list. So it could still be built if a need arises, like some sort of a safety issue, or if development happens, like something building to the north of Tuolton Road, that could cause a lot more traffic coming out of there, it could still be required. But it's off the list of projects that the city would fund. And our next step after adopting this is to get into more of a detailed prioritization process of really which projects should we be building next? And start getting a little more of an order in the plan for the next few years based on the big list included in this plan.
And that leads us to our Planning Commission recommendation. I'm not sure if we have any commissioners online with us tonight. I know it's getting late. Well, I'll deliver that they unanimously voted for approval of the 2045 TSP amendments as proposed in the packet before you. They also wanted to share consideration of concerns from the River Park CIO regarding the traffic issues at the intersection of 115th Avenue and Tuolton Road that Mike addressed. Since our last work session, that project has been moved to our unconstrained project list. But if that project is considered in the future, they would like to see neighborhood engagement for any future proceedings at that intersection. That concludes my presentation. You can open it up for discussion.
All right. So at this point, are there any members of the public who wish to testify in favor of this proposal? I have one sign up right now, Nancy. Welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I, I mentioned earlier, but I want to commend the staff again on the TSP, their efforts to be inclusive and responsive to all the public outreach they had and the committee. There was really good communication with our advisory committee. I feel like there's a really well-rounded project list for all modes. We listened to those that were more in favor of active transportation. We listened to those that are frustrated with some of the congestion issues in Tuolton. And, you know, Tuolton Sherwood Road probably is the worst culprit we have. And it, it is what it is, but I feel like we had some good discussions about it. It's a very difficult something to fix. The one project leading into this that I have some, a major concern about is the potential grade separation of Tuolton Sherwood Road, Boones Ferry Road, and the railroad. It's Project CS1, if you want to look at, find it later. I feel like grade separating that intersection to make traffic go smoother so you don't have to wait for the railroad, whatever, they end up, whatever end up being the goals for an ultimate project would be, I feel like that could just provide an incredible barrier for our local community. I mean, think grade separation of I-5 and Nyberg Road, right? It's like, how do you get across when you've got one going under, one going over? And maybe we could get the railroad to go under or over. But, you know, that's maybe, you can always think positively about these things. So anyway, I feel like when we get to that point, we need to really prioritize local traffic, active transportation, vulnerable populations, rather than maybe commuters wanting to get through town quickly and not have to wait for the railroad. I realize though, in reading and being in discussion with staff and the consultant, that this project likely would be phased and may be completely redefined or very much refined as they did more analysis and we set our priorities for that area. Therefore, I do support leaving the project in, not modifying it. Recognize, recognize that the onerous results would, could result, should, should result, could result from grade separation if that was the end product of the project. I want to recognize the importance of adding more greenways to the community, extending trails. The importance of that Tonquin Trail is, is really good for the south side. Can I do like 30 seconds? Okay. The existing greenways we have are great. I think we always need to remember to try to get them into master plan and into development plans before the neighborhood is built. As we know, a lot of people don't want to put them in after the neighborhood is built. But I do feel like pathways are an essential ingredient of livable, healthy, happy, happy community. And then finally, I want to tell you to keep up the good work. The recent transportation improvements all over town have been great and are definitely a result of your leadership and good staff work. So thank you for allowing me to comment.
Thanks Nancy. Are there any other members of public who wish to testify in favor of this proposal, ordinance? Come on up.
I share the same as Nancy with the, the projects on the list. Also same concerns with the grade separation. I do think the feasibility of that is, really limits that project anyhow with everything involved or the costs that would go with it. But what I do think that is a, something else to address, the, the traffic that will be coming down Tuolton Sherwood Road once that project's finished, connecting Sherwood and bringing all that flow in. We don't have a lot of development in Tuolton that's going to continue, but Sherwood and all those communities do, and that's going to push a lot of traffic our way. And I think something that can be very beneficial, and it is kind of mentioned in the plan, is investments in technology with the signals and priority, big word, prioritization of, of flow. And talking with the, the city engineers on that, they, we do have those, that technology out there that can be updated and upgraded. I think the, the more control that we have on that within Tuolton to kind of have a, especially with AI coming out with things, to change the lights or change the timing and address traffic concerns as they come up and make changes with that. If anybody's been stuck on that road and, or at that intersection and you don't get that arrow all the time, or super short, or trying to work around the train when it comes through, it seems a little complicated. Or it seems like somebody out there that's flagging traffic could do it a little bit better than how the current light is working. So I think just investing in technology on the lights. Also, as we were talking about the roundabouts or improvement intersections, I personally am not a fan of roundabouts. In school, they were pushed really hard in planning. But I think in reality, especially experiencing the, the ones in Bend, at least when I've been running out there, I call them kind of like pedestrian danger zones. So when we're talking about like multimodal transportation and safety improvements, I think that the roundabout can sometimes be effective way in certain areas or small neighborhoods. But when you get to larger streets, the difference of a roundabout or a signalized intersection, I think a signalized intersection is a better route to go through. I think it's safer for pedestrians, less investment that's needed, or less right-of-way acquisition needed for that. And then you can also control it from an engineering standpoint versus a roundabout. It's kind of left for the traffic to do its own thing. And I think we'll see that play out really well at the Abernathy Bridge. Improvements there with that roundabout connecting Oregon City and that. How that, yeah, so already got some issues there. So thanks again for staff and the consultants, all the work they did on this. And I look forward to seeing the projects get prioritized on this and what comes out. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to comment and support? Anyone on Zoom? All right. So I'll go ahead and go to members of public who wish to testify against the ordinance, either in the room or on Zoom. Okay, seeing none. Other, is there any member of the public who just wants to testify on this ordinance either way? All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and move on to council questions for Aaron and Mike. Council Brooks.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for addressing all of the concerns and questions that we had in our last meeting that you presented at. I have just one question, and it comes from a conversation that I had at one point. And is there information on the transportation plan that indicates that it's in a residential or industrial area?
I think it comes down to zoning.
So it does look at the land use context, which would include the difference between those two zoning efforts. But we don't have a map or anything that distinguishes those zones as it relates to the transportation system. And I don't know if that gets to the heart of your question, or...
Yeah, and the only reason why is the context, I think. Like I was asking about Boones Ferry when I first came on as a counselor, and there had been a lot of feedback because of the speed and how wide it should be because of the community and the houses that have been there and have been established there. So I think that when people are looking at it and might not know, I mean, I've been looking at these maps for a long time, and sometimes I don't know if we're an industrial area or a residential area, if there could just be like a different color or... And I think it would be helpful for contextualization if we're worried about sound, pollution. You know, like if you're coming and going to work, migration type patterns and things like that, that might be helpful for people that are looking at the maps. That's my only thoughts around it.
I appreciate that feedback. I think one thing to share back out is our online mapping system, Tuolton GIS, does have the functionality where you can overlay zoning and our functional classifications of the roadway network. Like I said, we don't really have that visually shown on the TSP, but we do have the online medium that we can use to display that. And I don't know if you're asking for updates or just sharing feedback for maybe future efforts.
Whatever works is what I'm saying.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Council President Pratt.
Really quick, that signal system is like one of my top priorities, and it's on the constraint list. Just so you know.
And it's in our capital improvement plan to start looking at it next year.
Yeah, that, that's one of the biggest complaints I hear from people about our transportation system, so.
Of course, I have to manage expectations. We can't keep everybody mean when they want.
It does have a $2 million price tag on it, so. Anyway, on the grade separation, I'm sorry, I didn't bring my laptop, so I can't look it up. So does it state that the, the road will go over or the train, or is it undefined?
So in the TSP, we have two projects listed at the Boones Ferry Tuolton Sherwood Railroad intersection. We have the larger project, which is some form of grade separation, undefined at this point, but to be investigated.
Okay.
And then the smaller project is some combination of turn lanes or walking and biking improvements to basically make it work as well as it can at grade.
Okay, and then my last question is, when you were, you listed next steps and coming up with a prioritization list, and I see metro on there. So what role does metro play in all of this?
Well, we get to prioritize, you know, the city gets to prioritize what the city wants. Metro gets involved with things like some allocation, allocation of certain sources of federal funding.
Okay.
And things like that. Then they also manage the regional transportation plan, which projects of a certain size have to be in before they can be done. And then that's used for air quality modeling and so on.
Okay.
But Tuolton gets to prioritize what Tuolton wants.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? Seeing no other questions, I'll go ahead and close this hearing, and we'll move on to deliberations.
I'm in support of this plan.
Do you have a motion?
And I'd like to motion, do we have to do the whole reading?
First and second, all that stuff.
I'd like to motion for first reading of Ordinance Number 1451-25. By title only. Okay.
I have a motion second requesting first reading by title only of ordinance, scroll up so I can get it right. Ordinance 1451-25. Any discussions on those motions? Counselor Sacco.
Aye.
Counselor Hillier.
Aye.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Yes.
Counselor Brooks.
Aye.
Counselor President Pratt.
Aye.
Chair of Oats, aye.
Ordinance Number 1451-25, an ordinance related to land use, amending the Tuolton Comprehensive Plan and Development Code PTA 25-001, PMA 25-0001.
I'd like to motion for a second reading of Ordinance 1451-25 by title only. Second.
I have a motion second for second, motion a second for second reading of- I have a motion and second for second, motion and second for second reading of ordinance 1451-25 by title only. Any discussions on those motions? Counsel Sacco.
Aye.
Counsel Hillier.
Aye.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel Brooks.
Aye.
Counsel Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counsel President Pratt.
Aye.
Chair of votes, aye. Can I keep Papio on his feet?
Ordinance number 1451-25, an ordinance related to land use, amending the Tuolton Comprehensive Plan and Development Code PTA 25-001, PMA 25-001.
Okay. I motion that we adopt ordinance number 1451-25.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 1451-25. Any discussions on motions? Counsel Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counsel Brooks.
Aye.
Counsel Sacco.
Aye.
Counsel Hillier.
Aye.
Counsel Reyes.
Before I say aye, I just want to say that I'm glad to see that, something that we've accomplished from our goals that says adopting the transportation plus aye.
Counsel President, yeah, I was there. Counsel President Pratt.
Aye.
Chair of votes, aye. The ordinance is adopted. All right. Oh, yes, it's a TSP, you gotta do that. All right. Thank you, Erin, and thank you, Mike.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy.
All right. So that brings us to, I think, items removed from consent. We did have one item removed from consent, item number six, and that was Counsel Gonzalez.
So I just wanted to vote no for the increases, so I did not want to lump this in with the other voting, so.
All right, so we just need to vote on the resolution on its own, correct, Kevin?
Yes.
All right. And that's a voice vote or a roll call vote? Both, that vote?
Is it, this is a resolution on consent, it's been moved, I believe, general business or roll call?
Roll call, okay.
I motion that we adopt resolution number 5903-25.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 5903-25. Any discussions on those motions? Seeing none, Counsel Sacco.
Aye.
Counsel Hillier.
Aye.
Counsel Reyes.
I'm going to abstain from this, just because I need more info.
Counsel Gonzalez.
I'm going to vote no.
Okay. Counsel Brooks.
Aye.
Counsel President Pratt.
Aye.
Chair of votes, aye, it passes. All right. Counsel Communication, let's go ahead and we'll start to my left, Counsel Gonzalez.
I have nothing to report on, thank you.
Counsel Brooks.
All right. So from, what is it, July 15th through the 18th, I was at the National League of Cities' Board and Leadership Meeting, and it was a very good experience. I represent and participate with two councils, one committee and one affinity group, and have built relationships over the last six years. And there's a couple highlights that I want to mention. Anyone that wants to talk further or would like more information, they can send out. But the one thing I wanted to say was the Community Development Block Grant was moved forward at the time I was there, so the advocacy that us and other cities around the country utilized helped. The home grant, however, had a zero mark at the end of its budget allotment, which means not only would it not be funded, but it could also be zeroed out to just be discontinued. So I think that we'll be looking at advocacy hopefully in the future to help protect that home grant, at least I would like to. They also covered a lot of issues that are going on with cities that are being impacted by these big roundups. It was very emotional conversation, and also hate crimes being up 30%. People of color that serve as city councilors being, having their lives threatened, all kinds of things that fortunately our council hasn't experienced. But it was a, you know, a very sobering conference. And when I'm thinking through problem solving right now, I really am thinking to the future on those basic, not only food, clothing, shelter, but the very bottom two was safety, and how do we promote those things in our community, which is a really sad state of affairs when, in my mind, we don't need to be in this position. I also talked with, met with 723 gentleman that I met at the conference named Matthew Halliday, who gave me a presentation on Indiegov, which I am not prepared to really discuss too much yet, but it is a way of streamlining work, especially work from our emails. And also attended the same day an MBC Leo General Membership Meeting where they discussed their summer conference. And on the August 8th, I attended a tour of a, I was invited to attend a tour by Metro Counselor Rosenthal for a new forest acquisition in, up near Scapuce that's still in Macomb County. It'll be utilized for studying all different kinds of resiliency and preservation of trees and forests, and I think that's a relevant conversation, especially after tonight. And there are also four riparian areas in that forest, and three of them are fish bearing. And there's also a new institute that I've learned about that is free, and you can learn about best practices with trails. And like my fellow counselors, I attended our Pride Concert and Celebration. My dog can't handle big crowds, I realize, she's not usually like that, but she seems to get overstimulated, she's a puppy. So I would want to say that I wish it was more strongly attended because it was an amazing event, and I have just some of the cards from the people that presented, besides some of our own counselors here. There was a Rose City Delights and the Sustainable Refillery, Millior, and many others. Hopefully, there's a place on our website that says all of the different people that were vendors there, because there were some amazing arts and services and lovely people that aren't all from our area that learned more about Tuolton and felt welcomed by our community, which made me feel really good and really proud of the work that we've done, especially with Idea Committee, which I don't have to say much more about that. And I think there's more, but I can't think anymore tonight, so that's enough on me, thank you.
Counsel Sacco.
Thank you. So I attended the Core Area Community Workshop, it was great to hear all the community input, and I think Michelle and Stet are doing a great job. I really love the way that Michelle sort of framed up the conversation, because it can be kind of tough to do that with so many people in the room, which made it very clear on what the objectives were. It was really a fun event. Attended the Idea Committee, we, the committee talked about their summer outreach strategy, and they have been attending events such as the concert on Friday. And I talked to Chris, who I think manned the booth the entire time, and had some great interactions with community members coming over, and him, Chris having the chance to explain the Idea Committee to our community. The Idea Committee also adopted their work plan last meeting, which is very exciting. And then we recently had our CCAA meeting, and we always say this, but it is very, very true, can't say it enough, we had lots of wonderful applicants, had more applicants than positions, and, you know, just really encourage people to continue to look for ways to volunteer in our community. We have the best volunteers in the world. Thank you.
Counsel Hillier.
Thank you. I had one meeting, and it was actually earlier today. There was, there's a lot of discussion on the Washington County Consolidated Communications Agency. I get to sit on the Board of Commissioners for that, and there are many conversations around the budget and potentially gaps of service, and how much cities pay into fire versus police or for the 911 operations and such. And so I think just for me, they held a meeting today to help, well, there were a lot of people there, but to answer a whole bunch of questions. And we're, Don Hudson was also there to help really refine the questions, and so we're going to have some better answers here in the next six months, probably, especially before we go into the budget session in January and February. And so we'll be able to have some more information, because there does seem to continue to be a lack of staffing, and they're really looking for qualified people to find jobs as a 911 dispatch person. So I encourage you to consider that as a job option or to share with people for that. So thank you.
Counsel Reyes.
Just the official meeting with the Advisory Committee's interviews with candidates, with the two fellow counselors that joined me with that, Counsel Pratt and Counsel Sacco. As always, we always say this, but it is really hard to pick someone or just because there's just wonderful people in our community that just ready to serve, and they have the heart, and I just, sometimes it's hard to say no, but we can't, you know, we have to pick one. So that's always really difficult. But I always enjoy those meetings, and I enjoy meeting people in our community that I don't necessarily meet them anywhere else other than in those meetings, and then I start seeing them more and more. So I, it's always an honor and a pleasure to be in that committee. I did attend the Latino Business Network on last Thursday, and it was, I just sat there and one of our business presented, but I also was there to answer any questions about the city. I tried my best to explain what's going on and how we're, how we do business, and kind of like the format and the structure of our city. I realized that it's not the same in other countries or in other parts of the world or even in other states. So even by saying here in Oregon and here in Tuolton, this is how we are structured, and these are the steps you can take to reach out to certain people in our city. And so even that, it's explaining that a little bit, and why do I serve, why am I not a paid counselor versus other ones? So I really literally have to explain the fundamentals, very, very basic structure, so they can understand and actually have access to the things that we can offer here for that community and the businesses. But it's always, it's always good to sit there, and they're always asking interesting questions that I sometimes think they don't know, but I'm like, wow, okay, you do know about that. So anyway, they're paying attention, they're looking, and they know a lot about what's happening in the downtown development and all that planning, which I really am happy that they're getting informed, so.
Counsel President Pratt.
Okay. I attended the C4 Metro meeting, and they talked about the interstate bridge replacement, which is now up to $7.5 billion. And ODOT's claiming that once they put tolling in, 3% to 5% of people only will divert to I-205, so good luck with that. The mayor and I attended three different things with R1 Act. We got a tour of the Abernathy Bridge, which is pretty fascinating, and what did they say? They went down over 300 feet down with those 12-foot piling, so. And then we went to workshop that night where we got, it was cathartic if nothing else, but we all got to say what we thought ODOT should prioritize to ODOT directly, so that was good. And then we had a regular R1 Act meeting. Oh, gosh, what did they talk about that? The safety, that they have this goal of zero deaths or severe injuries by 2035. Well, they give, it was a very scant, I guess I put it. It had very little data, but they're just, they were trying to show us that they're going in the wrong direction. So thank you, city staff, for all the work you put into giving us data and information so we could make a decision. Anyway, then I went to the C4 Retreat. The first day was on housing, that was kind of fascinating. They had some people talk about the differences between the rural and more suburban parts of Clackamas County, and then Happy Valley, this is kind of a foreboding of what's coming, but Clackamas County worked really hard to get a certain type of housing out of a certain area, and they did a lot of work around to make it work. And then Governor Kotex's bill undid all that, and now the state gets to decide things for us. And then the second day was on transportation, and there was a lot of asking ODOT and TRIMET just to rethink their systems and processes, and especially TRIMET and their hub system and not, you know, like they need to rethink the whole thing, I guess, and maybe work with others to provide transportation to little cities instead of these big buses going everywhere. I went to the Clackamas County Business Association event where Mark Meek spoke, and he mostly spoke about why he didn't vote for the transportation bill, which was mainly because it was dropped at the last minute, they weren't given information, and he felt there was a total lack of transparency. Then I went to the Community Identity Workshop, which was great. I was at the booth for the Community Advisory Committee on the Downtown Revitalization with Cheryl Lynn at the Pride Event, and we got input from different people. And food carts was really popular, by the way, so just thought I'd mention that. And then our CCAA meeting, and yeah, we're pretty fortunate, the people we have volunteering in our community. That's it.
Quickly, I want to thank ODOT for the Abernathy Bridge tour. You don't really see much going over the bridge, doesn't seem like they make any progress at all, but once you go under the bridge, it's amazing to see what they've done, putting new pillars in, taking old pillars out, the expanding of the lanes is already done, they're, it's just pretty cool to see what they've done. But there's, what'd they say, another year and a half?
Yeah.
It's, there's still got a while to go. And one of the cool features that we never realized, you know, they talked about was the bridge, the way it was built, has the ability to flex. So what they're, in the coming months, they're going to flex the bridge up and slide things in and flex it down. Just, it's an engineering marvel what they're doing there, and it was pretty cool to hear about it. On July 22nd, Chair Roberts, the Clackamas County Chair, had his first meeting with mayors. He's just been, you know, working, you know, had a fire hose on him since he took over in January. It was just checking with mayors to find out what was going on in each of our cities, and then he talked about, you know, the housing effort, transportation efforts, and the courthouse effort in Clackamas County, and he was looking forward to the C4 Retreat. On the 24th, the GPI Small Cities Consortium met, and it was one of the biggest meetings we've had. It was a legislative update from the lens of economic development for the state and for cities. Incredible attendance, great speakers, and, you know, looking at what got done in the legislature and what needs to be done in terms of economic development in the region. Share Counsel President Pratt's perspective on the R1 Act meeting on the 4th about transportation safety, ODOT's safety. We're going backwards in terms of safety, and it wasn't one of the best presentations I've ever seen, that just seemed to go on and on and on, and we're all looking at the numbers going, we're not, we're never going to make this goal, we're going backwards in terms of safety on our interstates.
in terms of safety on our interstates. I want to thank Cindy and the Safety Town folks, was fun to pop in to lunch, a couple lunchtimes, and chat with the kids going to Safety Town, and then the Q and A, as usual, very interesting questions every time. Enjoyed that. Again, and the downtown Pulse Center meeting, I was astounded by how many people showed up, and I agree with what Counselor Sacco was saying, Michelle was fantastic, and what she did with that. National Night Out, thanks chief. That was a fun event, our neighborhood had an event between our residents and the Tuolatin Police Department, all the ribs I made got wiped out. Six slabs of ribs, gone. And we got the, you know, Tony was there, and the new police dog was there, in addition to the motorcycle cop, so thanks again for doing National Night Out and doing the rounds. And today finally was, also wanted to thank the Tuolatin Valley Pride folks and the city staff for putting the Pride Event on. Yeah, I would like to see more people, I think it was just a timing issue. It started early, and I know Heidi and Julie mentioned about doing an after action and see what might be better next year. And finally, today, Chair Harrington had her meeting with the mayors, and it was more discussions about the two Washington County levees, and she presented us with the new DEI standards for Washington County. Very, very interesting about the new plan, and you know, what, it's interesting, they color-coded red, yellow, and green words that, for any kind of federal grants from Washington County staffers, the red words can't be used, they have a list of words, there are substitutes for it. It's just very interesting, and you know, the gyrations the county had to do to continue to get the federal funding and revise their DEI policy. I know they took a lot of heat from folks about it, and Keith Wilson, the mayor of Portland's going through that same heat, you know, when you're risking a couple hundred million dollars, you, you have to revise, you know, you got to do what you got to do, or where are you going to come up with those couple hundred million dollars? And that's it for me. Anything else for the guilty order?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Good night. Have a very good evening.
Recording stopped.